Okay, we are now live on YouTube. For those watching the live stream, we're gonna get started in just a few minutes, so thank you for your patience.
I'm gonna ask everyone to silence their phones, put on vibrate or silent, so we don't have, we have minimal disruptions. Good morning and welcome to our Queensborough President Land Use Public Hearing. This hearing is taking place both in person in the Helen Marshall Cultural Center and on our website at queensbp.nyc.gov. I am Queensborough President Donovan Richardson, and I will be chairing this hearing. If you have not signed up to testify virtually, please visit our website at queensbp.nyc.gov. If you're attending our public hearing in person and would like to testify, please make sure to sign in with staff and indicate your wish to speak. Once again, if you are attending a public hearing in person and would like to testify, please make sure to sign in with staff and indicate your wish to speak. Please note your opportunity to speak will follow those who are pre-registered. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify in real time. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today. It may be submitted by email to planning2, the number two, at queensbp.nyc.gov. Planning, number two, at queensbp.nyc.gov. Or by conventional mail sent to the office of the Queensborough President at 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226 Q Gardens, New York, 11424. And I think, are you gonna read the, alright, so I'm gonna go to you to please review how this public hearing will proceed.
Thank you. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will give a description of the requested zoning action, the proposed project, and respond to any questions solely from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have two minutes to ask questions and deliver testimony. Due to the length of this hearing, some questions may need to be answered at a later date. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record, and if you are formally speaking as a representative or member of a group, and whether you are for or against the item. Then you may begin your testimony. Please note that a signal will ring at the time is up. Thank you. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against the item may also be called to testify in an alternating basis. Please note that if you are testifying virtually, you may keep your, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have technical issues, please let our planning staff know and the chat, and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa. Now we'll have the applicants come up. Department of City Planning present.
Do the introduction.
Oh, oh, sorry, I messed up.
Calendar item number one and two are related items. All calendar items are related items. Your alert number, sorry, 250175HQ. The applicant, Department of City Planning, affected community boards, number two and one.
Great. State your name for the record and who you're representing, and then you may begin.
Good mor, hello, good morning. Hi, my name is Hee Kyung Yang, New York City Department of City Planning. Okay, thank you. So, good morning, again, my name is Hee Kyung Yang from the New York City Department of City Planning, and I am the project lead for the Long Island City Neighborhood Plan. I'm joined today by my colleagues from City Planning, as well as my colleagues from EDC, DOT, DP, HPD, and Parks. Some are joining virtually and some are here in person. I'm excited to share the Long Island City Neighborhood Plan, a vision for the next 10 years of growth, opportunity, and transformation of the neighborhood. Over the past year and a half, in partnership with Councilmember Julie Wong, we've had 12, we've held 21 public meetings, hearing concerns and desires from over 1,800 attendees. These conversations have led to the following five goals. One, create more housing for people at range of, at different ranges of income levels. Create a, two, create a connected, resilient, and accessible waterfront from Gantry Plaza State Park to Queensbridge Park. Three, meet the infrastructure and community needs of a growing neighborhood while mitigating climate impacts. Four, support the diversity and vitality of Long Island City's unique and thriving economy. And five, make it easier for residents to access neighborhood resources and amenities. As proposed, the Long Island City Neighborhood Plan is projected to create close to 14,700 new homes, of which approximately 4,300 would be permanently income-restricted and rent-regulated. The plan would also create nearly 3.5 million square feet of new floor area for commercial and community facility uses and allow space to support approximately 14,400 new jobs in an area with many transit options that connect the neighborhood to essential services and employment opportunities. The following land use actions are proposed to encourage housing growth while requiring permanently affordable housing, enliven corridors with active ground floor use, and streetscape improvements and incentivize job growth in the neighborhood. We have the zoning map and zoning text amendments, which are proposed to support the area's growth by applying mandatory inclusionary housing to the project area, expand opportunities for open space and improve resiliency along the waterfront, and modifying the existing special Long Island City mixed-use district. As co-applicants to this application, HPD is seeking a UDAP and disposition approval to develop and improve city-owned land with 100% affordable housing development. And with co-applicants DCAST and EDC, we are seeking approval for acquisition, site selection, and disposition of non-residential city-owned property to improve access along the waterfront. Lastly, we're proposing a city map amendment to improve circulation near the waterfront. Monday. The project area covers a 54-block area in Western Queens. Most of the project area is located within Community District, Queens Community District 2, while approximately six blocks are located in Community District 1. The proposed rezoning area focuses on the primarily industrial area south of Nycha's Queensbridge Houses campus and west of the Court Square neighborhood. The Neighborhood Plan aims to reach the five community-driven goals through a variety of approaches available within DCP's toolkit. This includes requiring permanent income-restricted housing, removing zoning barriers in industrial areas to create opportunities for both new and existing businesses to grow, applying mixed-use zoning in most of the study area to encourage an active neighborhood throughout all times of day, encourage lively streets, modernize waterfront open space requirements and expand open space amenities, and implement a variety of strategies to elevate neighborhood resiliency. We've broken up the project area in four distinct subareas. The waterfront, corridors, LIC Core and Queens Plaza, and the industrial subareas. We'll use these subareas to walk through the zoning proposal, beginning with the waterfront. Today, the waterfront is mostly comprised of low-to-mid-rise buildings that host a variety of manufacturing, auto, utility, and storage uses. A sampling of what you see in this photo today. Just one block beyond these buildings is Animal Basin, a small inlet off the East River with breathtaking views of Midtown Manhattan and four Freedom Parks on Roosevelt Island. Without visual access to the waterfront, these views would remain completely hidden. Existing zoning, which limits redevelopment potential, has kept access to the lengthy shoreline and sweeping views of Manhattan in private hands. Creating a connected, resilient, and accessible waterfront from Gantry Plaza State Park to Queensbridge Park would unlock many special moments like this one along Animal Basin and the East River. New mixed-use zoning districts proposed throughout the proportions of the waterfront will encourage redevelopment and deliver public benefits such as income-restricted housing, waterfront open space, and neighborhood services. This illustration shows what it might feel like when crossing Vernon Boulevard in the future. Connections to the waterfront will bring the public to Animal Basin, and new buildings will be required to meet more stringent codes such as onsite stormwater capture that improve coastal resiliency. As noted earlier, zoning along the waterfront is primarily for manufacturing uses. The proposal will map an M16A R9 district around Animal Basin and along the East River, and an M15A R8 district on parcels along 44th Drive. Requirements to include income-restricted units would apply to all areas shaded in the red and orange. Parcels without color, which include the ConEd site, are not proposed to be rezoned but are subject to updated waterfront access plan requirements and special district regulations to ensure consistency along the waterfront. Proposed changes to the waterfront access plan would increase public access to both Animal Basin and the East River, which would require at least 40 foot of open space along shoreline from Gantry Plaza State Park to Queensbridge Park with opportunities for open space to expand. The updates would also create a new street network that improves both access and visibility, and we create a floor area bonus to incentivize the development of community desires and amenities such as performance spaces, athletics fields, and playgrounds. To address concerns about coastal resiliency we've heard during our engagement and public hearings, I also want to highlight efforts towards coastal resiliency, which our, our plan takes multi, multi approach, multi-pronged approach, which strategies ranging from building level to area-wide planning. Following Hurricane Sandy in 2012, the city adopted temporary zoning rules promoting resilient design or future-proof buildings. In 2021, these rules were formally adopted by the council, which encouraged buildings to go beyond the standards set by the Building Code, which are already amongst the most stringent in the country. Beyond that, the waterfront access plan would require shore public walkways to be raised several feet above today's elevation to protect the uplink community from sea level rise and future storm events. The diagram on the right shows key street mapping changes. The areas highlighted in tan requires elevated legal grades. Lastly, stormwater management also plays a key role in the broader resiliency strategy. Currently, most of the project area is paved or built up, so stormwater can't soak into the ground and instead flows into the combined sewer system. The unified stormwater rule, which was recently updated, now requires sites over 20,000 square feet to implement building practices to manage stormwater on-site. As per the DIS, a majority of expected redevelopment sites would be subject to these new standards. Additionally, areas along the waterfront and inland areas outlined require planting standards that will reduce impervious coverage. This is just a snapshot of how redevelopment on private sites can reduce the strain on the stormwater system. As part of plan, we are also looking for opportunities within the public realm to achieve advanced goals on reducing the impacts of inland flooding. Next, we're gonna focus on the corridor subarea, which covers two of the main corridors in the project area 44th Drive and Vernon Boulevard. At the intersection of 44th Drive and Vernon Boulevard, we have Gordon Triangle. Today, this area's zoning prohibits residential or mixed-use buildings like those you see closer to Hunter's Point South or LIC Core. This zoning has impeded redevelopment and contributed to a fragmented, hard-to-navigate public realm near LIC Pier, one of the area's few waterfront access points. The proposed actions remove this obstacle by resorting to mixed-use districts that require development of income-restricted units. Additionally, special streetscape regulations would be applied along both corridors to create more inviting experience for pedestrians, cyclists, and public transit riders. DCP is also working with other partner agencies to coordinate safety, mobility, and public space improvements up and down these vital corridors. Moving further inland, in the intersection of 44th Drive and 21st Street, the zoning proposal would increase housing opportunities in this area. The zoning proposal seeks to vastly improve connectivity and access to public transit while activating the public realm by encouraging redevelopment along 44th Drive. M15A R8 is proposed as a step down from existing density along the waterfront. While the highest density in this subarea, which is shown in the brown, is an M14A R8A district mapped along 44th Drive. Lower-density districts are shaded in the yellow and orange. These lower densities are proposed to complement the existing density around Murray Playground and the areas south of the project area. MIH would be mapped in all shaded areas on this map to ensure that income-restricted units are included in new development. Next, we'll walk through the zoning proposal for the industrial subarea. Today, the IBZ is a center for jobs and a host of a variety of businesses. While many of them serve citywide needs like office construction, there has been a growth of local services such as barber shops, breweries, and sports clubs. In recent years, the creation of the 12th Street Plaza acts as a public realm intervention for workers and area residents alike. However, today's zoning restricts the growth of these businesses while the public realm conditions can be hostile for pedestrians traversing the area. While no residential is proposed within the IBZ, the proposal maintains the same manufacturing uses allowed today while removing restrictions to encourage business growth. Building on the success of the existing 12th Street Plaza, streetscape regulations will enhance the public realm experience by minimizing curb cuts, screening parking, and requiring blank wall treatments such as signage, living walls, or murals. The proposal calls for applying a variety of M14, I mean, sorry, M1A districts, which encourage loft-like building forms but flexible envelopes to address a variety of business needs. Maximum building heights range from 155 to 245 feet. An M16A district, which is an eight FAR, is proposed adjacent to the LIC Core, where high-density districts exist today. An M15A district with a 6.5 FAR is proposed as a step down away from the Core to relieve constraints street network. An M14A district is proposed to right-size the need for industrial center of IBZ and a step down from Dutch Kills neighborhood located to the north. Lastly, we'll walk through the zoning proposal for the final subarea, LIC Core and Queens Plaza. So today's LIC Core and Queens Plaza area hosts a broad variety of land uses. Along Queens Plaza, recent redevelopment has developed on housing production. Both current zoning does not require any income-restricted hu, hu, units, sorry. Current zoning is also absent of incentives to produce new open space in the inland areas. There is a large presence of vacant or underutilized sites in close proximity to Queensborough Plaza and 24th Street's Queensbridge stations. The proposal calls for expanding and introducing high mix, high-density mixed-use district as already mapped directly to the east while requiring income-restricted units. Streetscape regulations would be applied along key corridors in order to create an engaging public realm. An open space bonus would also be introduced to this area for the first time. The proposal would map M16 paired with R9 and R10 districts adjacent to transit stations and existing high-density mixed-use districts near Court Square. The M16 R9 district permits a higher commercial and manufacturing FAR at 15, while the R10 paired districts permit a higher residential FAR that maxes at 12 across all uses. The proposed district would have a height limit of 750 feet to limit shadow impacts on the adjacent Queensbridge Houses campus. The proposed actions also calls for a zoning text amendment pursuant to appendix F to map MIH to portions of the project area shown here in orange. Mapping MIH with this increase in resident density would produce approximately 4,000 permanently income-restricted units in LIC where there is none today. The, the following are highlighted text amendments proposed in the existing special districts. We have, we have the expanded general goals of the special district to include establishing streetscape regulations for walkable retail corridors, enhancing neighborhood diversity by broadening housing choices and establish physical and visual public access to and along the waterfront in all sub-districts. We have included a number of urban design principles that will guide the development to increase active ground floors, street well setbacks, and visual corridors to improve access to sunlight and views. Addressing concerns from the public during our engagement, the proposal includes an active recreational bonus for waterfront sites that provide a variety of amenities such as kayak launch, shuffleboard, or gathering launch, to name a few. And then moving inland, understanding the need for more inland open space opportunities. Through a CPC authorization, a public plaza bonus for up to 20% of additional floor area will be available to sites providing space for public use. Another need in the area are school sightings, and to encourage school sighting on large private sites, we're proposing a floor area exemption for projects that provide space for public schools and coordinate with SCA. And through a CPC authorization process, these sites would increase maximum height by 30 feet. Other edits to the special district include removing limitations on size of food and beverage retail services, so businesses do not have to be limited to serving the growing population here. Existing components of the special district, like the subway improvements requirements in the Queens Plaza and Court Square subareas, remain unchanged. Okay. The proposal also includes site-specific actions. Within the project area, there are three city-owned sites centered along 44th Drive and two sites under the ramps of the Ed Koch Queensborough Bridge. And lastly, the ConEd property located off of Vernon Boulevard, while not a city-owned site, is also subject to site-specific action. To better understand the community's vision for the three sites along 44th Drive, a public workshop was held in the winter of 2024. The community called for active community space with housing, open space, commercial space, and community facility. Desired open spaces should be connected, continuous, and promote waterfront resiliency. To meet the plan's goals of creating new housing for people at a range of income levels, co-applicants HPD is seeking a UDAA designation, UDAP project approval, and disposition of city-owned property at 44-36 Vernon Boulevard to facilitate the development of approximately 320 new income-restricted housing units. This site could also house new community facility space that may include educational components such as school or other spaces. With co-applicants DCAST, we're seeking disposition of city-owned property at 44-36 Vernon Boulevard and 4-99 44th Drive. EDC released an RFI, or Request for Information, last month for the Vernon Building. Teams interested in redeveloping this property can share concepts for redevelopment or adaptive reuse before the August 27 deadline. The lots under the ramps at the Ed Koch Queensborough Bridge are also subject to disposition approval at Blocks 428, Lot 12, 13, 16, and Block 429, Lot 13, 15, and 29. This disposition is action, action is necessary for the city to enter into future agreements with private entities on the adjoining privately-owned sites. There are no known projects at this time, but this action would allow the city to maintain control over whatever development rights are conveyed. There are no known projects at this time, but this action would allow the city to maintain control over whatever development rights are conveyed for the greater need of the city. Project development would occur through a future R F P process where detailed programmatic requirements such as open space could be outlined in the R F P. A major waterfront property includes the privately-owned Con Edison Learning Center facility, which runs along the East River. Due to its critical role as a training facility for a utility company, we do not expect the redevelopment on this site in the future. To meet the plan's goals of creating a connected, resilient, and accessible waterfront from Grantry Plaza State Park to Queensbridge Park, D C P with co-applicants D C A S and E D C are seeking acquisition and site selection of block four eighty eight lot one fourteen, which aligns with the nearly nine hundred foot long waterfront portion of the Con Ed property. Approval of this action would grant the city the ability to acquire waterfront portion of this lot in the future. The existing street network along the waterfront does not provide sufficient circulation to align with the proposed actions. In order to enhance circulation and right-size streets to create a distinct waterfront, we're proposing a series of mapping, demapping, widening, realigning, and narrowing changes to the city map. Finally, I'll summarize the findings of the environmental analysis. As part of this application, a draft environmental impact statement, or D I S, was prepared. D C P acting on behalf of the C P C as lead agency issued a notice of completion of a D I S on April eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Where the D I S does not identify significant adverse impacts, technical areas have been grayed out. Significant adverse impacts are identified for categories shown in green to the right. Mitigation measures are identified in the D I S and will be further refined for the final environmental impact statement. To close, throughout our engagement and newer process, my team and I have been asked about the why here and the why now. And I want to reiterate three things I've shared. There are three main reasons why this neighborhood plan is happening now. One, there's a need for affordable housing. L I C has been one of the fastest-growing neighborhoods in New York City, and over twenty-one thousand homes have been constructed in the past two decades. While some income-restricted affordable housing has been created, current zoning does not mandate the creation of affordable housing in new homes, I mean, new buildings. Two, building business growth. L I C is Western Queens' key industrial and commercial hub. It is centrally located and has excellent vehicular and transit infrastructure, making it an ideal location for business. And three, the need for open space. As Long Island City grows, new open space is needed to increase resiliency and support community well-being. With this neighborhood plan, we have the opportunity to create a resilient and continuous public waterfront from Grantry Plaza to Queensbridge Park. L I C has been through decades of planning and attempts to piecemeal rezonings. While land use updates since the nineteen nineties have allowed much of the neighborhood to grow, the one L I C project has been left unchanged and remains locked in place by decades-old regulation despite the city's housing shortage. The landscape is different today, and the plan looks to address the need of the city that have accumulated over the years. And although there is an arm of this plan that is focused on land use changes, which is the majority of the presentation in the land use actions and proposals, there's another arm that focuses on the city capital investments and commitments that are being delivered during this review process. As part of this planning effort, we're working with city agencies to ensure that publicly-owned sites are used to meet community priorities and city needs such as schools, community facilities, office spaces, and job opportunities, as well as new open space. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and I thank you, and I want to thank the D C P and of course, Councilmember One in the community for all the work that has gone into this plan. And of course, my office as well, and look forward to shaping this. So I want to start with just infrastructure, and I think the invite, the E I S show, the I S shows that there's no impact on infrastructure. I am happy to see that, I think you, in the plan, twenty thousand square feet. Any buildings over twenty thousand square feet would be subject to stormwater retention. In your presentation, you did mention forty-three of the sixty-seven sites would obviously have to adhere to stormwater retention. Can you talk to the other twenty-four sites?
The, okay, sorry. Does the slides, maybe I can go back to the slide. The other twenty-something sites are probably not big enough, or at least not meeting the twenty thousand square foot criteria.
Got that. And have y'all mapped, because I find it hard to believe there would be no infrastructure impacts in this area. So I'm interested in hearing what is D E P's plan. And actually, as the Borough President, one of my first forays into this office was being in this area because there was, what was, what was the flooding rate? A major, I'm blanking on the word. But a pipe, we had a major pipe burst.
Okay.
And, and so this area has really needed infrastructure investment.
Yeah.
In the past, water main is what I was saying. So I just wanted to point that out, that has D E P and has the former Environmental Protection Chairman of the City Council. I'm well-versed on flooding and investment. So interested in knowing, are there any plans that D E P has in place surrounding infrastructure investment?
The D E P team is actually online, but also we've been working very closely with them as well as engaging with the council member on a monthly basis on proactively coming up with a plan. So they are aware of the concerns that are.
So have they mapped, and I guess we can go to D E P, have they mapped any areas specifically for direct investments?
Not currently.
All right, so. So, you know, I think what I did, especially representing Southeast Queens during that period in the Rockaways, I'm very aware. I think we are going to look at some legislative actions on this.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm very interested in seeing some real infrastructure investment here. So D E P, if they can just speak to that before we get into the rest. Can we call D E P?
Yeah, go ahead. This is Dylan Mar from D E P. Sorry. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Great. And thanks, Heikang, for starting off. Yeah, so, so regarding the stormwater rule, which you referenced, the twenty thousand square foot component, those sites are going to be required to retain or detain, meaning hold back completely or slow release the stormwater into our system there. This is going to be really important because in sites that are holding back the water and completely absorbing it, which is about one point five inches of rainwater. So if you think of a two-inch storm, which is an extremely heavy storm, one, the first one point five inches would be held back and not enter our system. So there will be actually a decrease in stormwater from the new development on these sites. And these sites, again, are the twenty thousand square feet. Also sites that be eight five thousand square feet of new imperviousness. So for example, it was previously a pervious layer, like grass, for example. And if there, you know, if their building is developing that site, that also needs to meet the exact same requirement. So there's actually a twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand square feet and under still would have to meet that same requirement?
Five thousand and above.
Thousand and above, okay.
So think of five thousand of, say, a grass area behind a building and that were to be developed. So five thousand square feet is about the size of a basketball court. They also need to meet the same requirements.
So I get the green, I get the green infrastructure piece. Speak to the gray infrastructure piece.
Yeah, sure. I'll get to that in one second. The other sites, the other twenty or so sites out of that Heikang mentioned, they also have more restrictive release rates. So they basically need to release stormwater into the system more slowly. So even though they don't need to meet the green portion of the unified stormwater rule, they do need to meet a slower release rate portion of the stormwater rule. So that will also help the stormwater in the system. In terms of investments for the area, we're assessing the sewer infrastructure in this area. And we started that proactively with, in partnership with Department of City Planning earlier this year, and it took some time to get that plan in process. So we've been discussing and getting ready to assess the sewer, the drainage network in that area. And we're proactively doing that. Typically, we do it after a rezoning because you need certainty on what actually is going to be zoned for our analysis. But we understand the importance of stormwater drainage in the area and worked with D C P to identify that. So we need to finish that drainage plan in order to have the best understanding of the drainage needs in the area. The larger drainage needs were showed to have no impact, and that's at a more, maybe more of a trunk level. If you think of a tree, the trunk would be the sewers. And Borough President, I'm sure you understand that very well, having spent your time in the council on this, on our committee. But so those were found to be able to, you know, take the supply, the flows from this development.
So, all right, so what's the timeline on the drainage study? Just give that to me again. And I just, you know, I would just want to put on the record because, you know, obviously, we're pro-housing. What we don't want to see here is the mistakes that were made in Southeast Queens.
Sure.
Where investments in infrastructure were put on the back burner, and then we ended up with a lot of housing. So I think the idea is to try to correct this because it's taken forty years to get where we're at now in Southeast Queens to finally alleviate. So it is my hope that we'll fast-track a lot of this. But honestly, this study should have been done a long time ago.
Sure. So the study is going to finish early next year. So I think the first quarter is our expectation. And, oh, sorry, and regarding Southeast Queens, there's a difference, which is Southeast Queens is separately sewered area where sewage goes through one pipe and the stormwater goes through a step-up pipe. L I C is a combined sewer, which means it's oversized for sanitary. So there's space for the new sanitary to flow in the pipe. And then in storm, in storm events with the stormwater rule, reducing the reducing the stormwater flowing into the system, that will be an important factor in helping the system be able to, you know, handle the new flows and manage the new flows from the sanitary contribution.
Got it. Still behind, but it's, we'll move on from that.
Okay, thank you.
Forward, and we look forward to seeing that in writing as well. All right, I'm going to move on to affordability. So in your presentation, you had M I H options one, two, and three. Are you mapping, you only get to map one option, correct?
The map option would be up to the.
The city council?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, I'm aware. I actually wasn't off of mandatory inclusionary housing too, so it's always fun to continue this work. And I do know the price to build here is extensive because of all the development that has happened over the past decade. So it is good that we'll be able to go back, just as in Jamaica, and try to correct some of the inequity. I'm leaning towards option two, but I wanted to know what other programs are you exploring outside of mandatory inclusionary housing to maximize affordability? Are you using SARAH, mix-and-match programs? You can just go through that.
So I can say for, and again, my F P D colleagues are on as well, on the waterfront site that we have city ownership, we have the full one hundred percent affordable component. The program itself is being figured out as this study continues and this plan continues. But that is one program that we're certain of.
Which program?
I'm sorry, the, when I say program, it said the, I mean, the hundred percent.
Right, right, I get that.
But the exact program has not been set.
Okay. So, yeah, so we would look to obviously mix-and-match program or which has been pretty successful in other parts of Queens to capture that affordability, and that's the only city-owned site?
I'm thinking, yes, yes.
Okay. And even for private development, are you looking at any programs to maximize rather than? M I H was always supposed to be the floor, not the ceiling.
Right.
So are there any developers you're speaking to to also maximize opportunities with programming?
We are speaking with developers, but that program has not been set.
Okay. And then I want to go to Queensbridge Houses. So one, have we mapped any improvements for the N Y T A residents of Queensbridge Houses?
We haven't mapped improvements, but the conversations about commitments for improvements to Queensbridge have been ongoing. We have heard from the community members of Queensbridge throughout engagement. There has been a call for the vacant apartments. We're working very closely with N Y T A right now to make sure that that's completed or unvacated or filled, sorry. There's also a call for improvements to, what we've heard, and we're striving for collaboration on improving Jacob Rees Center. It's a really important community center for Queensbridge, so we're working with N Y T A on that.
And, you know, I like numbers. I'm a numbers person. So when we say improvements, you know, I'm hoping by the end of this process, we see actual millions in numbers set aside.
Okay.
As well.
Absolutely.
And I, and I know, Councilmember One, we're on the same page on that. And actually, we're putting some major capital into the daycare this year to fix that this year. And, you know, I also want to extend my support for Jacob Rees through the process as well.
Okay.
But, you know, the mayor should fully fund it. And then I did hear you say filling vacant apartments. Can you speak to capital for current people residing there? Are we looking at capital improvements to fix up existing apartments that residents live in? And has N Y T A done an assessment on tickets and fixing the tickets?
I believe, yes, that is happening now. I don't have the numbers, and I can get back to you on that.
Okay, so I'll look to see that before we hit your recommendation. And then I also, I guess I'll run into open space and streetscape in a second. You know, one of the things I'm always concerned about when I'm in Queensbridge is the configuration of the circle and the streets. So are we looking at streetscape improvements in front of Jacob Rees?
We are not because they are sort of in the context area, but with hopeful the improvements of Jacob Rees, that's part of that. Also.
Are you saying that is a part of it?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Because the streetscape regulation that I spoke about is specific to the.
So what I'm going to say on that is, although that's true, you know, this rezoning absolutely does impact Queensbridge, even though it's not totally mapped.
Yeah.
And I know from my time in rezoning Far Rockaway that we were able to also get aesthetic improvements in other parts of N Y T A developments that weren't necessarily in the Cashman area as well. So is D O T here? Because I would be interested in certainly seeing D O T do some visioning, being that especially visioning sessions were held in Jacob Rees. I think we can all agree that there's a need for improvement there for the residents. So is D O T here or online?
Hey, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Hey, Jason, are you upstairs?
No, I had multiple things that I wanted to be there in person. I apologize. I really, really did.
I'm mad at you. You're not downstairs. Okay.
No, yeah, yeah, no, of course, I'd be in the building if I was. I'm out in the field today, but thanks for having us here, Borough President. Thanks for opening up Heikang and D C P team. My name is Jason Banbury, Deputy Borough Commissioner for D O T. I'm joined here by Joseph Paddy, who will be able to answer some transportation questions. You know, we'll certainly work with Heikang and the team to take a look at those spaces. Right now, we've been doing a lot of work on the areas around Queensbridge, not only just D O T, but through this rezoning effort. So we'll certainly, over the coming weeks, wrap those in. We have a debrief later this afternoon, actually, on some of those items. And so I'll make sure, you know, that we enter them in and work with Heikang and D C P to envelope them into the continuing process to share with you and Councilmember One moving forward.
Yeah, and we'll request a timeline on that as well. And then while we have you, we're going to stay on, we're going to stay on D O T because I might as well just go into the city-owned lots under the Queensborough Bridge. So if you just want to speak to what progress have we made, and I know that there are some state-owned sites as well under, I just want to hear where we at.
Yeah, feel.
Open space usage.
Yeah, well, certainly, I'm, so if you'll allow me, I'll talk a little bit about, well, a lot of bit about the Queensbridge sites, the D O T sites specifically, as we have multiple sites under the Queensborough Bridge. Much of the land on the Queensborough Bridge that's been highlighted, you know, over the last couple of weeks is not underutilized, but necessary to support critical maintenance and work on the East River bridges and also the areas around the bridges with city services. The facilities include D O T's bridge maintenance, preventative maintenance, and anti-icing yard, which is underutilized, which is utilized to ensure bridges have the appropriate equipment and staff to address the citywide emergencies. Also, we also have Q B B. Um uh also, um we also have Q B B contractors uh uh under since at these facilities right now. As we all know, Queensborough Bridge is on the reconstruction and there's a next phase uh for the reconstruction process. Um and we'll be working with a a city planning and and DOT on a process to potentially re- relocate some of the areas, and I'll be talking a little bit about that. While many of these facilities are are vital to the agency, we've been working with D C P and City Hall to address the the request to to relocate relocate these spaces. So over the last several months, we've been committed to advancing Councilmember One and the community's requests uh for north-south connections along the East River and then other areas underneath the Queensborough Bridge. As a result of that work, the agency's become an active partner in the council member's waterfront plan and will be reducing our waterfront bridge preventative maintenance and anti-icing facility by up to forty feet off of the bulkhead. This is gonna help deliver on Councilmember One's waterfront esplanade uh plan, finally connecting Queensbridge to the Gantry State Park, which you've seen uh earlier in the presentation. We'll need to maintain the site for daily use, but we can shrink the space so that we there's a north-south can north-south connection between the bridge and the base waterfront to meet the council members' requests. In addition to seeing this once in a lifetime waterfront connection through uh DOT's also working to re-envision the utilization of other DOT areas and infrastructure on the Q B B. Um I would be remiss if I didn't thank you, Borough President, for the support you provided for the Queensborough Bridge, because this is also connected to that, that south outer roadway opening um on dedicated space to pedestrians, creates a safer connection for Queens folks. Um and also it gives uh cyclists six thousand three hundred daily riders um and dedicated space. Um want to mention this because uh there's also newly developed uh uh this newly developed path and dedicated space also connect to existing infrastructure and infrastructure that we're gonna continue uh to build Crescent Street, Queens Boulevard, Eleventh Street, Jackson Avenue, Forty-Fourth Drive, Northern Boulevard, all protected bike lanes um that come with other features uh for pedestrians and traffic calming. Um want to also mention uh the Dutch Kills uh ramp public realm space that we announced last week. Um uh it was an additional public space uh uh approximately more than one acre. It's a nine million dollar project uh uh at the Dutch Kill Street uh called the baseline, which is gonna be creating a welcoming public destination, uh new children's playground, seating and more. Uh then there's the Eleventh Street North-South Bike Connector. Uh this aims to reduce the barrier for Nitro residents uh caused by the Queensborough Bridge and some of the facilities there. Uh this multi-use pedestrian bike path is gonna reduce the barrier for Queensbridge residents, but also connect to existing open space assets such as Murray Playground, the Twelfth Street Plaza, sports courts uh that are also adjacent to Queensborough Bridge. And then the Twenty-Third Street Public Realm Improvements and Public Space Recapture. Uh this project will connect Queensbridge uh and Queens Plaza North uh bike path with the core of LIC by potentially upgrading cycling facilities, re- reconstructing curb lines, sidewalks and roadways, as well as pedestrian refuges and um curb extensions. And then in addition to having um earnest conversations with D C P and D C A S about uh potentially uh relocating additional uh city facilities um underneath the bridge, we also make the main progress over the next couple of weeks and through the U L R process uh on these conversations. Uh we aim to share progress with you and your team, as well as the council member over that time, um a- as we see some of these priorities through.
Thank you, that's a that's a lot to chew on. Um and then the timeline, so obviously D C A S owns the lot, well, owns the lots under the bridge, correct?
So they're 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 managed, yes, by by D C A S, but they're on, they're they're managed by DOT, but yes, well, within within the Cashman of.
Department been brought into the discussions um as well?
Yeah, well, so there's a there's a a a DOT Parks Working Group. Um we actually meet fairly regularly to develop these uh spaces. Parks could speak to, you know, some of the interventions, sorry to throw you out there, Eileen, um you know, that we're working on. Um we could talk a little bit more about the Eleventh Street Connector if you want and Twenty-Third Street. These are still in the early stages of 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 development, as we have more meetings and an onsite tomorrow uh with City Hall to 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 look at these spaces. Um but as I said, we're gonna continue providing you and the council member with updates uh as we work through the U L R process.
Right, uh we'll go to Parks Department.
Hi Borough President, my name is Aileen Healy, I'm a senior planner uh in Parks Planning and Neighborhood Development Office. Um would you like me to speak about the the Queensbridge Baby Park and?
And any other open space commitments being made, including Con Edison Site?
Absolutely, well, you know, the the agency recently broke ground on the addition, on addition to Queensbridge Baby Park that will create nearly half an acre of new open space. So that's located on Vernon Boulevard near the Queensborough Bridge, um and the project is gonna transform a former maintenance yard into a public park with a central gathering space, lawns, ping pong tables and benches, as well as bistro style seating. Um you know, we also have the opportunity to create more open space within Queensbridge Baby Park. Uh within the last few years, Parks worked closely with Nitro, D C A S and N Y P D to clean up a portion of the park uh just west of Twenty-First Street that was used as a dumping ground for abandoned vehicles. Um the area is about a quarter of an acre in size and is now ripe for reimagining. Um it could be turned into a wide variety of open space amenities um based on the results of a future community visioning process. Anything from a skate park to a green landscaped area with seating could be constructed on this land. Um and of course, you know, we're taking a very multifaceted approach to exploring new open space creation in Long Island City. Um aside from developing new park space, um you know, we're working very, very closely with DOT, as Jason mentioned, on creating new connections um and improving access to open space. Um like Jason had had talked about, the the bike pad path underneath the Queensborough Bridge at Eleventh Street. Um our goal here is to really um connect park visitors and Queensbridge houses to cross underneath the Queensborough Bridge, Eleventh Street, um really opening up that park more.
And have you outgiving thought, and I know Parks Department uh runs community centers, or do you have any community centers in this area? And has there been any conversations around maybe working with some private developers to also figure out maybe some more um community facility space?
Do you mean like a like a recreation center or?
Yeah.
Um you know, I understand that this community facility space is a is a really important um priority of the community. Um specific recreation space um hasn't been um a hu- a huge priority expressed to us, but we would be happy to work with, you know, um our our colleagues at D C P um as well as private developers in the future um to discuss opportunities for uh community facility or recreation spaces in it.
You hear that, private developers, any private developers out there listening or testifying? All right, I I threw that out there, I knew you wouldn't have an answer. Uh and then I I stay, I want to stay here because we have the area of Blissville as well, uh and they've been in need of more trees and and open space and improvements, so I didn't want to leave them out, although they're with not within the scope of the the rezoning, uh and I'm gonna ask D C P to also speak to any improvements or investments uh from a DOT perspective, uh Parks perspective, infrastructure perspective as well. So if you can speak to that, has there been any conversations uh around Blissville?
Um I think uh conversations just in terms of expanding a little bit space access or public realm improvements, I'm sorry, can you be a little bit more specific?
Yeah, public realm improvements, whether that's tree plant things aesthetically, uh and this is for you in DOT, so if you don't have the answer, that's okay, but we're gonna make this a big part of our recommendation as well.
I got, I I I have some updates. Uh we're we're DOT is very close and actually, we've been working with Parks uh um over over time to do things now uh for Blissville and we're gonna continue the conversation. What have we done now for for Blissville? Um as we speak, we're finalizing the pedestrian uh and bike lane improvements uh for Blissville, it's a Blissville Project, it's a project that was developed uh with the Civic and supported by Community, Community Board Two and the council member. Um uh that comes with pedestrian improvements and that followed uh Parks's plan to add more trees, this happened several years ago along Review Avenue, uh and we're just complementing that. Um we're gonna continue working with the Blissville Civic um uh on finding opportunities now and and see if we can work through the city planning process to embed um uh uh if it's feasible.
And then aesthetically, lighting, have you looked at lighting too?
Yeah, um uh right now, at the moment, we have, we're more so working on smaller requests for lighting, um but what we'll do is is, you know, we can redouble our efforts, talk with Tom and Tousis and 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 the Blissville Civic, um you know, through this through this conversation with the rezoning, to see if there's opportunities uh to do more lighting. We've just actually begun a conversation um with uh city planning about DOT spaces there too, so there might be other potential opportunities uh for public space. We're still early in that conversation, but that's something that, you know, we're we're working on developing as uh through the summer, um you know, as we continue through the U L R process and 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 get to to the end of that process.
Okay, all right, I look forward to more conversations on that, more concrete conversations. Uh okay, I want to turn to healthcare quick. Uh I didn't hear much about healthcare, so the addition of fourteen thousand units, obviously, Manhattan is close, but I don't believe our residents should have to go to Manhattan. Have there been any conversations with health and hospitals uh or any other institutions in expanding or creating new opportunities for healthcare uh in the area as well?
Um yes, we have been um speaking with our partner agencies, um and the conversation is still ongoing. Um but we have heard the concerns um of from the community as well as um yourself, so.
Um so I I know H and H has, and this goes back to private developers as well, and we just did one and uh broke ground on one in the Far Rockway rezoning, um H and H Opportunity Centers, so we should really be thinking in terms of how can we alleviate some of the pressure on Mount Sinai and other institutions?
Hmm.
Um so, you know, I would be looking for a new facility.
Okay.
Um for the community as well. And that brings me to school seats as well. Um where are we at with school seats and have you identified any um sites for new school seats? And what has the need shown? Uh uh what what has the need, the need challenge?
Yes, um the D E I S did identify a need for three um schools.
Three schools.
Two to three elementary schools.
I like three.
Okay. Um we are um a- as I mentioned, the the site, the city owned site that has the hundred percent affordable component to it, um there is an opportunity for school seating there, so that's one site.
So you're due to school ground floor and then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, I'll speak to that.
Okay.
Hi, good morning, Lin Zhang from Queens City Planning. Um on that DOT site, actually, uh we set aside space for standalone school, so it doesn't interfere with construction of the affordable housing, so they're separate.
Do we have a unit, I mean, a number count, how many seats?
Um we haven't done that analysis yet, yeah, so that's coming, but I think the site is pretty much like split down the middle between the housing and and the school.
And then have you identified other sites outside of that?
Um currently, the S E A is in conversations with other private site developers in the area, um and as Haikyoung had mentioned in the special um purpose district, um we, there is gonna be a hundred fifty thousand square foot exemption as well as an authorization if um if there's a height limit in that district and you need to go up a little bit more to Comedy School on the base.
Okay. All right. All right, I think I'm making progress on all my questions. Um oh, let's go to libraries as well.
Um there, I believe the D E I S identified the um library, uh Court Square being reopened. I'm sorry, it identified it, but it did not um identified a need, but it didn't um uh show the data that the Court Square Library is being opened, reopened, so that's good.
We got a million in there.
Yes, yes, thank you. Um and that is the the latest on the libraries, but the need for libraries.
The lease was signed, correct?
Uh Katie was at least, yes.
Yes, okay.
Um and uh we have heard from the um the public as well, the need for more community facilities, this is um and libraries in areas where people can congregate and have such uses for sharing ideas.
And I'm also gonna plug uh Queensbridge Library, which I don't think is a library, Queensbridge Houses Library. Um they deserve a quality library too. Um and I've I've started initial conversations with Dennis Walcott uh on this, uh but there should definitely be some capital put in there to actually make it a library.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Um and then I I guess on the school seats, uh is it a focus on K through eight or hi- high schools needs as well, just going back to the D E I S? There's always a need for more high school seats as well.
Um actually, the D E I S only identify a need for for elementary.
Elementary.
Yeah.
And I know we have younger families there, all right. Um then I just want to get into cultural, D Y C D, um you know, youth programming is important, have we thought of any programming, job programming as well uh for the Nitro residents as well?
As part of our engagement that has come up, um we have been um in close communications with D Y C D, um but the programs have not been set yet.
Okay, and workforce development would be a critical one as well.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Especially for eighteen through twenty-four.
Okay.
So looking forward to more conversations on that. And I think I am, um oh, and then I I guess I would just talk about childcare quick.
Okay.
Um pre-K, U P K, three K, any expansion of those programs in the area as well.
Okay, got it.
And then al- along with that, you know, obviously, we have some great cultural institutions in the area.
Yeah.
Um are there any investments coming to our cultural institutions? And any conversations with D C A, D C L A?
Um, oh my goodness, there is the, I know that D C L A has just announced the the program, oh, the arts in place, arts, yes?
One.
Great place, cream place.
Okay.
Um very exciting, um we have, like I said, um we have been speaking with them, um there is this uh great need and passion and want for cultural institutions in LIC, there's a great community here um who's seeking it, um and we're continuing to work with them.
Yeah, and uh have there been any visioning sessions just on arts and culture?
Um.
With D C L A?
With D C L A, uh no?
I knew the answer to that.
They knew that.
All right, I knew the answer, it's the lawyer rule, you you asked the question, you already know the answer to.
Okay.
So I'm gonna suggest that we do that.
Okay.
Uh and really, really a big focus on arts and culture um there and any programming and and definitely investment, more importantly. Um so if there are programs, Lori Combo, if you're listening, uh we look forward to to definitely coming together to expand cultural opportunities, and that gets me to the Vernon Bu- Boulevard site as well, the D O E site. Um can you just talk to, so I know the R F I is out, when is when is the deadline again?
Yeah, the R F I is, uh deadline is August uh this year. Um there, I I'm going to point to our colleague at E D C if he wants to talk about it.
Oh, my favorite.
It's here.
And see him sneaker.
Hi, morning Borough President.
Good morning.
Eric Bilal, Vice President, Neighborhood Strategies at E D C. Uh yeah, the Vernon Building R F I is out on the street, we're expecting responses by August twenty-seventh. Uh a reminder that this is a request for information, not a request for proposals. Um so at the end of that process, the city expects to take that information, synthesize it, and then include it into a kind of foundational um dossier for any kind of um redevelopment efforts for the building.
So there would be a R F P that goes out.
Yeah, any redevelopment would happen with a subsequent public procurement, that's right.
Right, and then, you know, and and I hope within that at the R F P, we're gonna, you know, ad- adhere to some terms on affordability um as well within that, within the scope of the R F P, so the the way that R F P is driven, it's very important to the community.
Yeah, and and I'll just.
Been a lot of conversation around this site for, I feel like, before I was VP.
That's right, that's right, yeah, a- and just to clarify, the R F I is for um ideas and concepts for adaptive reuse of the Vernon Building only, so no introduction of housing at this point, the idea is that we want to see what could happen with the building as it is.
And D O E would relocate?
That's the assumption in the R F.
Okay, got it.
That's right.
And are we making any progress on, instead of waiting on them actually proceeding to move, have we identified other sites?
I I would say that it's an ongoing process and conversation, but I'll note that there are currently very critical citywide operations happening in the building, so it it is a really important asset for the city and for public schools.
Yep, yep. All right, thank you. All right, that being said, finishing my, I finished my round of questioning, uh and thank you for your testimony, and we look forward to to the work ahead uh to ma- really shape this plan and make it more sound.
Yep.
Unbeneficial to all communities uh in LIC. Uh all right, with that being said, we're gonna turn to the general public for testimony, I'll turn to Vicky.
Hi, thank you, so uh there's a lot of people signed up to testify today, so we will do our best to expedite this process, but also make sure that everyone delivers their testimony um with enough time, so I'm going to call three people in person and then I'm gonna alternate and call three people on Zoom. Um so we'll hear from three people in person first and then three people on Zoom, so I'm gonna go ahead and and call Christine Hunter, Fanny Chang, and Michael. Fanny Chang, and Michael Vilada. Also apologies for the pronunciation, um, if I do not.
And we're going to stick to two minutes because we want to get through. I mean, I could extend, but two minutes is the goal. But you can submit your testimony if it's more than two to three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good morning Borough President Richards. I'm Christine Hunter. I'm here as the Chair of Queens Community Board Two's Land Use and Housing Committee. CB Two's One LIC Working Group comprised, comprised of board members from multiple relevant committees, met repeatedly over the last two months and held two very well-attended public hearings to develop recommendations that reflect both the current needs of LIC as well as its residents' vision and priorities for the future. These stipulations come out of an urgent desire that new development meaningfully benefit the existing community, address historic underinvestment, and create a mixed-income, multi-generational neighborhood for the long term. While we support the city's goals for affordable housing, sustainability, and accessibility, our recommendations highlight several critical areas where the plan must go further. Housing affordability. We require MIH Options One and Three throughout the rezoning area to ensure that homes are affordable, excuse me, affordable to those who need them most. Prioritize family-sized units in all new construction and a hundred percent affordable development on public sites. Public land for public good. City-owned sites must be used to deliver multiple community priorities. We support a cohesive vision that includes affordable housing, a high school, arts facilities, and public park space. An infrastructure plan. The neighborhood needs remedies for unmet needs left by past rezoning and rampant growth, including upgrades to sewers and transit, and the addition of more schools. We call for two desperately needed public parks, one on the waterfront and one in Court Square, without which the projected population growth will leave LIC as the city's worst neighborhood in terms of open space per person. Zoning with purpose. We suggest adjusting the base zoning slightly downward in key areas. Sorry.
Continue.
Maintaining the same goal for the number of units while encouraging the use of open space FAR bonuses to achieve that goal. We also recommend removing the unlimited height provisions in order to preserve contextual scale and livability. Support for LIC's vital arts and culture community to ensure that it is not priced out and eroded by future development. Thank you for, you know, asking for another workshop on that. Uh, support for existing businesses and a more fine-grained approach to changes in the existing IBZ zone. And there's more specifics on that in our full recommendation. Oversight and accountability. Establish a community oversight committee and formalize implementation through a binding MOU, ensuring transparency and lasting public trust. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to get it right. The success of One LIC depends on making good on the promise of planning with, not just for, the community. We look forward to working in partnership with the city to achieve a truly inclusive and sustainable LIC.
Thank you for your testimony. Community boards, give more time.
Okay, thank you, uh, Fanny Chang.
Good morning Borough President O'Donovan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at this testimony. My name is Fanny Chang, and I represent Chang Realty Group and, um, SPP Cornerstone. We are parcel forty-five that was identified by City Planning. After twenty months of community engagement with the City Council and City Planning, today, City Planning has represented advisory zoning to which we are for in favor of. It, it represents an opportunity for us to create local and national and global economic growth. I do not agree with Community Board's two recommendations for the IBZ zone. The recommendations are exclusive. We need to remember the underserved communities and their use that are around the IBZ zone. I would be emailing you the rest of my testimony, um, by email today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, the last person I had called was Michael Vilada. For this round, I should say, not the last in total.
Day. My name is Michael Vilada. On behalf of the Smith and Conkey workers, this is your council, I'm proud to express our strong support for the One LIC.
Speaking to your mic.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
This transformative initiative represents a significant opportunity to address New York City's housing crisis and fostering economic growth and job creation in Long Island City. Uh, the One LIC plan will create nearly fourteen thousand new jobs, including four thousand five affordable homes, fourteen thousand plus jobs, um, great union jobs to support and uplift families and strengthen the community. Skills trade, as skilled tradespeople, our members are ready to contribute to the construction of these homes, commercial spaces, and infrastructure improvements, ensuring high-quality union-built developments that stand the test of time. We commend the plan's focus on expanding waterfront access, enhancing public spaces, and investing in critical infrastructure like schools and parks. These elements will not only create good-paying union jobs, but also improve the quality of the life of the residents in Queensbridge at this point and beyond. We urge, uh, future support, uh, of the project and the stakeholders, and we want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Uh, next we will go to three folks on Zoom. Uh, I'm asking Jordan to promote Leo Gutman, Vishnu Redd, and Charles Wang, uh, from attendee to panelist. So I'll read those names again. Leo Gutman, Vishnu Redd, and Charles Wang. Jordan, are any of them available on Zoom?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, great, let me try. I am not able to turn on my camera, but that is okay. My name is Vishnu Reddy from Sunnyside, and I support One LIC. In a historic housing shortage, it's unacceptable that one of the most transit-rich and high-opportunity parts of the country is warehouses and car repair shops. It's unacceptable that there's a vacant lot next to the Queensborough Plaza subway stop, and it's unacceptable to deny New Yorkers homes. For real humans who are struggling to afford a home and are waiting in the lottery pool, uh, thousands of people waiting for affordable housing. There is a real human cost to, uh, not building housing on these sites, and we have the responsibility to help these thousands of New Yorkers by providing them with affordable rent-stabilized homes. I also want to speak on a personal note. I'm excited to see new neighbors come here and contribute to the dynamism that makes LIC so great. In the past ten years, so many great new community spaces and cultural amenities. This area feels more alive than ever before. That's why I love living here. And I want to continue that progress while also making sure that we have more affordable homes so people of all income levels can be my neighbor, and that we can be at the forefront of economic integration to get past the patterns of segregation that we've lived with for decades.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, uh, is Leo Gutman available?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, uh, yes, I'm Leo Gutman. Uh, I live in Court Square. I'm just outside of the rezoning area. Um, I'm here to speak in favor of the plan today. Um, I'm excited about a lot that's in the plan, um, infrastructure improvements, making the waterfront more connected, um, creating more resilient neighborhood that's, um, built, you know, prepared to like, um, you know, withstand climate change. Um, you know, school seats that will, um, you know, and, uh, that will allow the neighborhood to grow effectively. I think what I'm personally most excited about is, in the midst of the housing crisis we're in, um, the opportunity to create, uh, fourteen thousand new homes, uh, including over four thousand permanently affordable homes. That to me is like a huge win for the neighborhood and for the city as a whole. Um, that's, you know, thousands of people who might get their first, uh, ever affordable apartment, the thing that lets them stay in the city instead of having to move away. Um, it can welcome new New Yorkers in, um, to a neighborhood with lots of transit and jobs. Um, I think new New Yorkers is always a beautiful thing and what makes New York what it is. And so to me, that's like the, the key thing that I'm absolutely most excited about. And, you know, I'm happy to hear all the engagement that's going on, questions that are related to potential negative impacts that are, you know, partly covered by, you know, the impact statements and, um, I hope more is done to mitigate those effects, but, um, overall, like, um, the thing that's gonna, you know, make New York affordable and make this neighborhood affordable is leading the way on housing opportunities like this. Um, I don't think we should pass it up, and I think we should, uh, approve the, the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. And the, uh, last person for this round, Charles Wang. Okay, um, I don't believe he's on the Zoom, so I'm going to go ahead and call one more person on the Zoom. Is Dan Miller on Zoom?
Dan Miller.
Okay, so, um, just in the interest of keeping this going, I'm going to move on to a couple in-person testimonials. Um, so I'm going to call the names Costa Konstantides, uh, Daniel Chan, and Karisha Batan. Again, apologies for the pronunciation.
Took me ten years to be able to pronounce this. Konstantides.
Konstantides.
Mr. Borough President, how are you, brother?
Good to see you, brother.
Good to see everyone here. Uh, I just wanted to, you know, express my support for the One LIC plan. Look, you know, as my organization serves youth in Long Island City, we have the Sky Farm LIC. We also have the after-school program at PS seventy-eight. Uh, families have come to us about the need for more amenities, need for more community spaces. Uh, the, the, on, out, on the peninsula there, there is no real community space beyond the Y. Um, and, you know, we've been asked by so many schools there to support more of our kids. Uh, the opportunity for more green space and places for our kids to play, uh, is so important. And because we're, right now, we're inside the school, but trying to get that soccer field outside, be able to get a permit to play there is nearly impossible. Uh, so we definitely, the families in the community are asking for more places for their kids to be able to go and play and to have construction things to do. So, uh, as you're looking with these plans, all the questions you brought up around healthcare and sustainability and, uh, affordability, um, definitely need to be answered, and, you know, making sure that community space stays such. But, uh, I have great faith, uh, that this will be, once you land on it, I know that you'll be able to put us forward and make sure Queens gets what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Hello. Um, I've been a resident of the One LIC project area for seven years, um, and I'm a leader at a local nonprofit called Biotech Without Borders, a biology-based maker space that I relocated from downtown Brooklyn into LIC. Uh, one of the reasons that we relocated into this area is because of the relatively low rents in the IBZ, um, as well as putting us in the midst of many artists and light manufacturing, that form of vibrant community. But to me, this rezoning, uh, seems too large to me. I welcome the infrastructure improvements, but I'm concerned that the rezoning is going to drive up our rent and, uh, take away, like, the artists and small businesses that make the neighborhood a good place to live and work. Uh, I, I think instead of greenlighting sort of large development, uh, areas, uh, we should be, the city should be leveraging its control over zoning to incentivize those private developers to share their plans more with the people that live in the area so that we can see what changes are going to happen to the proposed sites before, uh, they can act. I'm especially concerned that the public sites in Anvil Basin are being lumped in with these private sites. Uh, those sites are already known to be vulnerable to flooding and sewer capacity. So I think that having housing on them, affordable housing on them, is really disadvantaging that public housing or, or that affordable housing to be not of a high quality. Um, and so I urge the Borough President to vote no to this rezoning, or at least be very critical of that plan, um, so that we can give time, LIC, time to adapt, uh, to the changes that are already at place in the neighborhood. Uh, I think that we should be including things like the LIC Coalition. Uh, they have a waterfront plan that talks about resilience, as well as the Western Queens CLT in, in this process, uh, in order to ensure that the community benefits from what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, my name is Karisha Batan. I am the founding executive director of the Queensborough Dance Festival. I also serve on Community Board Two on Land Use Committee, and I chair the Arts and Culture Committee. And I'm also a dancer. Um, under Queensborough Dance Festival, we provide free and outdoor programming, supporting, uh, specifically Queens-based dance organizations. Um, the DEIS and the One LIC plan failed to address a comprehensive plan for arts and culture, admittedly because there was a lack of awareness of the unique synergistic landscape of how arts and culture operates in LIC among different sized budgets of arts and culture organizations. Arts and culture is a leading reason for tourism within the neighborhood and also throughout the city into Long Island City, where one dollar spent on arts generates seven dollars in economic activity in our neighborhood. And arts has been a historical identity and key amenity of the neighborhood, as the development in the neighborhood has demonstrated. We are here to bring awareness and urge the Borough President and the city to make sure there are long-term investments in arts and culture through zoning, uh, through zoning actions, city agency support, and developer collaboration as stated in Community Board Two's recommendations, especially to support the arts organizations directly impacted and who are most vulnerable within the zoning area. We mapped a hundred and eleven arts and culture organizations and artist groups in the zoning area where many of these organizations further serve dozens, if not hundreds, more independent artists every year. Most small organizations are small budgets well below seven hundred and fifty thousand, yet provide cultural programming to the neighborhood as though they are twice their own size. Why is that? Because our values stayed, stand with celebrating our diversity, improving the quality of life in our schools, public spaces, and businesses, and building community through art, dance, music, film, and theater, all industries which exist in Long Island City. Yet, many organizations and artists still need affordable, long-term, proper workspaces to create and to continue to just, to serve our community. Through my organization, we know that there are dozens of dance companies alone. If they cannot find rehearsal space, may I continue? Thank you. If they cannot find rehearsal space, they simply cannot work, and there's no other industry where that is acceptable. This economic driver and identity of the neighborhood of arts and culture must not only be preserved, but expanded proportionately to the massive expansion proposed in the One LIC plan. I want to highlight two main CB Two recommendations for arts and culture. One is the zoning incentives for developers to create below-market arts and culture spaces. And two, investment to, the investment by developers into an LIC arts fund operated by a third-party local nonprofit to streamline funding equitably, especially among small-budget arts organizations within the zoning area. Our sector has already been in talks with partners to establish this type of operation and funding and eligibility requirements toward accessible, equitable funding, and we need the borough and city's allyship in this effort. We see models for this in other parts of the city. If One LIC is meant to be a comprehensive plan, it must include arts and culture. This is an opportunity for the public and private sectors to have creative, trailblazing collaborations for a successful, vibrant future of the neighborhood. Thank you so much for fighting for us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to move on to a few Zoom attendees, so, uh, I'm going to call the names, and again, apologies in pronunciation. Um, the first person is Jenny Dubnow. Uh, the next person is Lisa Deller, and then third is, uh, Laura Rothrock. So the first person, Jenny, if you are ready to give your testimony?
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Jenny Dubnow. I'm a longtime Queens resident and board co-chair of the Western Queens Community Land Trust. The One LIC upzoning should be voted down unless it can be reshaped to address the actual needs of LIC. One LIC would bring massive mostly market-rate towers to LIC. Many of these towers would be seventy-five to a hundred stories, including right across the street from Queensbridge Houses. Neighborhoods in NYC that have been upzoned like this have seen displacement of residents and small businesses. Surrounding rents rise, more affluent folks move in, and people can't afford to stay in their own communities. MIH does little to address this. Most MIH apartments aren't affordable to those most in need. Many of us Queens residents are frustrated at the idea that the city keeps making the same mistake. Simply put, LIC doesn't need another forest of luxury towers. This was mentioned over and over at the One LIC visioning sessions. People kept asking for more deeply affordable housing, not more towers that we can't afford. The true impact of this plan wasn't shared with community residents because the massing studies were never made public. And Queensbridge residents were mostly in the dark about what's coming their way. Some local groups have conducted a survey at Queensbridge and Ravenswood Houses, and sixty percent said they'd never heard of One LIC. As well, over eighty percent said that only rent below a thousand for a one-bedroom would be affordable to them. There will be practically no units at this level in this plan. Rezoning is a gift to developers. They get huge profits from building taller residential, unless this plan is modified. Unless this plan is modified to include far deeper affordability, it should be voted down. Another major issue are the public sites at Anvil Basin. Community residents have asked for not-for-profit uses, including a public park and an affordable manufacturing, cultural and community hub at the DOE Building. One LIC's upzoning of industrial sites will displace thousands of manufacturing businesses and artists. A community land trust in the DOE Building would help them stay. And we must not build more towers in a major flood zone. All of this was requested at the community sessions and yet was brushed aside. We should not upzone the public sites at Anvil Basin. Let's honor the community-based plans advanced by Western Queens CLT and LICC for sustainable nonprofit development on this public land. One LIC is an inequitable and unsustainable upzoning, not a real comprehensive plan. Borough President Richards, we beg of you to vote no.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, the next person, Lisa Deller.
Lisa Deller.
Lisa has left the Zoom. I don't hear anything. I don't know if it's just me.
Just give it one second, we'll be back.
Vicki? It's Lisa Deller. Can you hear me still?
Hi, Lisa. We uh had a little technical problem, but we're we're gonna get uh the Zoom back online.
Okay, I wound up getting off the Zoom and going onto YouTube, so.
Jordan, it's Tariqa. Can you unmute um the them in person? They looks like they're muted.
Unmute them in person?
Where it says streaming QBPO, it's muted.
I think Omar's working on whatever is going on.
Turn that off and then we'll.
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, sorry, someone is giving their public testimony. Uh, this is not counting against their time. Uh, please bear with us. We're trying to deal with this in real time, so we're gonna let Paula finish.
Great, I'll just finish. Thoughtful change can provide opportunity for so many, opportunity in the form of apartments, jobs, schools, open space, community facility like rec centers and space for arts and culture. For the LIC neighborhood plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna hold you.
Oh, sure.
So in terms of your sites, community facilities, very important to the community. Uh, have you had any thoughts or?
Uh, we've been in discuss- discussions, very serious discussions um with community facilities, with, you know, people who are running community facilities with, obviously, you know, Culture Lab is on our site, uh, so we've been working with them. And um, and we're, we've also been discussing with the council member uh about schools.
Okay, thank you. I love schools. Okay.
Thank you so much. Um, we're still working on, okay, I think we're back to Zoom. Thank you.
Lisa's on, I think you go to Lisa's.
Let's have Lisa.
Okay, um, good morning. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. My name is Lisa Deller, and I'm a community board member and have previously served as landes chair and chair of Community Board Two. The opinions shared here are mine alone. I'm here today to testify against the approval of the One LIC Plan as presented. The failure of this plan to adequately address the needs for public open space and parkland in the rezoning proposal is a fatal flaw of the rezoning design. While the forty-foot waterfront access plan is welcome as a continuous waterfront-connected walkway, it does not in and of itself increase the accessible parkland for the rezoning that projects exponential population growth. As we have seen in Court Square neighborhood failing to plan and incorporate significant parkland leaves families retroactively working to address mistakes of past planning. The Long Island City Coalition and Hunters Point Community Coalition comments stated June six notes that the existing open space is hidden behind small gains. The draft EIS claims that the project adds four point three eight acres of waterfront open space, but buries the fact that open space per resident drops nearly nineteen percent. This includes a twenty point six percent drop in active open space from point two-four to just one point point one-nine acres per one thousand residents, well below the ZEEKER guideline of two point oh. These small new open spaces are largely passive, privately owned, and exposed to air quality and shadow impacts. The site of public land is the opportunity of a lifetime. This is our last opportunity to preserve the public land for public uses, including parkland, affordable housing, a school and community facilities. The One LIC Plan is ancillary to the rezoning proposal. It establishes a narrative and outlines zoning characteristics and a carefully crafted vision for neighborhood change. Over the tw- past twenty years, a CB two member, I've reviewed numerous zoning proposals. They invariably glorify the proposed changes. We urge Borough President and our councilperson to fight hard for preservation of open space and the community benefits that Community Board Two recommends. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Lisa.
Thank you. And then we're gonna resume where we left off. Uh, Laura Rothrock, if you're available.
Good morning. My name is Laura Rothrock, and I'm the president of the Long Island City Partnership, a membership organization focused on the economic development of LIC. LIC Partnership supports the One LIC Plan, which reflects meaningful input from diverse stakeholders in the neighborhood and outlines a clear path towards a more livable, inclusive and resilient LIC. We also support the priorities of the council member, and she has outlined the following priorities: affordable housing, a connected waterfront, new public spaces, investment in sewage, plumbing and resilience infrastructure, new schools, and Queensbridge Houses investments, as well as community-driven development of public land.
Now you're back.
Oh.
Yes, the internet is going in and out, but please continue.
Okay. As a neighborhood known for its creative spirit, we also hope the final plan includes a strong commitment to arts and culture. HPD testified at a recent city council hearing that last year citywide, there were six million applications for just ten thousand affordable units. One LIC promises to bring permanent income-restricted affordable housing to the neighborhood. We encourage the Borough President to support the One LIC Plan and help meet the needs of our residents and businesses. Thank you for the opportunity to share my support.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Okay, so moving into the next three folks in person, uh, I had called Diego Guerrero, Claudia Chan, and Mondana Limbert.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, good morning. My name is Diego Guerrero, and I'm currently a summer fellow at the Tri-State Transportation Campaign. I'm also a QD student, so I would like to start off by thanking Mr. Richards for his continued support and funding CUNY schools. I'm here today to support the One LIC rezoning plan. I love biking around LIC, especially near Queensbridge Park and Gantry Plaza, but many streets lack the proper care to ensure our convenience and safety. For instance, biking north past Queensbridge Park, the bike, the bike lanes ends abruptly to allow on-street parking. This forces riders to make a dodge detour around the park. Biking south is even worse. There is no southbound bike lane at all. A few weeks ago, I almost crashed because of this into a fellow cyclist, all with fast-moving traffic right next to me. That's just one example, and that's why I support this plan's commitment to integrating bike safety infrastructure as part of the, as part of the proposed, proposed zoning, rezoning. With that being said, just adding new bike lanes alone will not be enough to accommodate the influx of new residents in the area. More often than not, the bike lanes that we have now are too narrow, impractical, and disappear when we need them the most. In addition, ask for the inclusion of bicycle traffic signals at busy intersections. We already see this being put to use at the intersection of Vernon Boulevard and Thirty-Sixth Avenue. If this cannot be implemented, I would also suggest alternatives like bicycle turn boxes, which gives riders a safe space to complete a left turn without having to go through traffic. These have proven to be effective in other parts of Queens. Overall, I urge you to negotiate with the city to ensure an intuitive and comprehensive bike network for the new LIC, rather than one that is disconnected, haphazard, and confusing like the one we have now. Let's work together to create a neighborhood where it doesn't feel like we have to navigate through a maze to get around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Go CUNY.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to Mondana Limbert. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Um, I'm also a CUNY professor, so at Queens, thank you. So my name's Mondana Limbert, and I've lived in Court Square with my family since 2011. I've also been a member of the Court Square Civic Association, which has been committed to responsible, human-scale, healthy development. We believe that the choice should not be between yes or no. Instead, we advocate for high-density, low- and medium-rise building, where resiliency and human-scale living with active green spaces can create a healthy, social and economic environment. Unfortunately, the One LIC proposal and the DEIS fail to provide these priorities. In fact, hidden, as Lisa Deller also mentioned, hidden in the DEIS is a significant loss of open space, as well as excessive shadows, increase in urban heat island effects, among other anti-human scale effects. For example, the DEIS claims the project adds four point three acres on the waterfront, but buries the fact that open space will actually drop, as Lisa Deller mentioned, by nearly nineteen percent. An active open space will drop to point two acres per one thousand residents, far below the city's own guidelines. Council member one has now recently been pushing to have the space under the Queensborough Bridge converted, which is wonderful, but a park under a massive industrial bridge blanketed, blanketing, blanketed by exhaust and shadowed by towers can't be the only park in this incredible opportunity where, in this incredible opportunity to build a healthy, livable neighborhood. Similarly, Local Law Ten sixty-five, as you know, mandates that the city increase its tree canopy to thirty percent. Yet Court Square is currently at five percent, and the DEIS completely ignores the city law, pretending it doesn't even exist. As it is, the few trees along the narrow sidewalks of the Towers of Queen Plaza and Jackson Avenue just wither and die, and the city is proposing to do that all over again. In a neighborhood that already suffers from serious urban heat island effects and which this cit- this week has been a complete nightmare, and is the third lowest in the city for open space, this plan makes LIC the absolute lowest. It's shameful. Yes, build more housing, but instead of sixty-five heat and shadow-producing towers along overly narrow sidewalks, as we've already experienced in Court Square and Queens Plaza, in which the DEIS present pretends is just fine, build something that will actually be human-scale and livable. We have the opportunity to really build a model neighborhood where families can live and breathe, breathe, which means human-scale, high-density and low and medium-rise. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, we're gonna go to the next three people on Zoom. Uh, first name Christina Chase, second name Pam Herrera, and third name Alan Suna. So Christina, whenever you're ready.
Good morning. My name is Christina Chase, and I'm here today on behalf of the Ravenswood Resident Association, home to approximately six thousand residents, as well as Justice for All Coalition, and of course, myself and my two-year-old, Mateo. Um, we ask that you oppose this plan. This luxury upzoning, um, plan, the draft EIS, um, is full of holes. In addition to excluding Ravenswood Houses from the context area, by excluding Queensbridge Houses from the impact area, the study wrongfully skews racial and demographic data, which is not truly representative or valid, and does not accurately measure the negative socioeconomic and racial impacts this will have on the neighborhood. Moreover, proposing over seventy-story luxury towers across the street from the largest public housing development in the nation, standing only six-story tall, uh, is the most egregious example of violent gentrification, community disenfranchisement, and neighborhood exclusion I've witnessed in my lifetime. This plan would literally and metaphorically leave Queensbridge in the shadows. Since 2023, outreach to NHTA residents, specifically Queensbridge, has been minimal, and at Ravenswood, zero. We haven't even had a representative from Julie Wong's office or from DCP come to any of our RA meetings throughout all of this time to communicate this plan or ULR. However, even though we're only a few blocks away, we're literally five blocks away, so the fact that we were excluded is nuts. However, Sunnyside Yards, which is absent of people, was fully included in the context area. However, we are doing outreach and collecting signatures and have over two hundred people, mainly NHTA residents, who oppose this plan and will continue all summer. We even surveyed residents and most wanted more public housing, extremely affordable housing, senior housing and supportive housing, not luxury housing. We are oversaturated with shelters of people that will never be able to access the proposed towers in this plan. This is not a solution for housing. It is a reinforcement of the Jim Crow spirit still alive in city planning and zoning today that continues to segregate and devastate. As a day-one participant of these meetings, I'm disappointed that NHTA residents were ignored. This study was no study at all, but a performative, community-facing rubber stamping. The whole time, DCP and other parties had a larger agenda than actually investing in our communities, and it was felt in every meeting, including the ways in which genuine community conversations were hampered by sterile unilateral facilitation. This plan was never for us, and we're not even in the diagrams or the pictures. Please have a look. We should have, we should not have to sell out our community for breadcrumbs and promises. We should not have to sell our stability and our dreams for the things we need to thrive. We can still have these things like schools and green space and resilience and space for arts and small businesses, but we don't have to upzone our community for luxury housing in doing so. MIH is not enough, and MIA, AMI, excuse me, is structured to increase every year. It is systematic displacement, which is inherently anti-black and anti-bore. All of these city, yeah, of yes, rezonings will destroy and destabilize our communities, especially this one. We have enough luxury housing in LIC. We don't need more. Lastly, I cannot continue to watch the land that has raised me turn into a manufactured luxury playground for the rich, especially when it comes at the cost of Queensbridge and Ravenswood and all the working class and even middle-class residents struggling to make ends meet in Western Queens. My heart is shattered. I've always envisioned raising my family here, but that dream fades more and more as the city continues to push out the very people who take care of it. I was born and raised in Queens, and I wanna raise Mateo here too. Please protect our communities and families from this predatory lux- luxury upzoning. Please oppose this plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
And next, Pam Herrera.
Good morning, Queensborough President. My name is Pamela Herrera, and I work for the Western Queens Community Land Trust as a land justice coordinator. The Western Queens CLT is not against development. We are for equitable development. What we need is deep affordability, truly community-led planning, and protections for permanently deep affordable housing. We need public investment in services and infrastructure, not luxury towers none of us can access. This development will constrain the working class further, displacing them from the roots they have set here. As a community org, we are here to support the marginalized communities the city continues to neglect. We are working closely with businesses, community members, and I'm here to urge you, Queensborough President, to vote no on the rezoning unless there is a prioritization of longstanding community-led plans for the public sites and a commitment to keeping all public sites out of private hands. A legally binding mechanism that funds deeply affordable housing far beyond the minimum required by law. A resilient waterfront public park connecting Queensbridge Houses with Animal Basin. Specific funding for upgrading current infrastructure in schools, sewage lines, and transportation proportional to the anticipated increase in population. Concrete financial investment in nearby NICA housing. The removal of unlimited-height zoning, especially across the street from Queensbridge Houses. And stricter regulations on mixed-use zoning to prevent displacement of manufacturing spaces and jobs. Thank you for listening and for your continued service to Queens.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Next is Alan Suna. Okay, Alan, if you can hear us, can you please unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
We cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Well, I apologize, and the Borough President knows my voice, so it's really new. Okay, so I'll have to do it this way. I'm Alan Suna, Chairman of Silver Cup Studios, that started in Long Island City 35 years ago, when the area was characterized by crime, drugs, and prostitution. Today, it's so much better than it was years ago. And this is what change can do to make things better. We don't have a dog in the fight here in the One LIC rezoning effort. We are not being rezoned. All right? We continue to support this effort, which brings much needed improvements to Long Island City. Contrary to the untruths that are being spread by some of the groups that have spoken earlier, there will be new and better schools. In fact, I believe there will be four of them. There will be mixed-income housing, where 25% to 35%, 30% of all housing will be affordable and permanently affordable. There'll be better flood controls to improve shoreline protections. We will have more open space, and more than any other neighborhood in Western Queens. And including a water-scented pedestrian and bicycle connection, although it includes the park all the way south to Animal Basin. None of these changes will force anyone out of their homes in Queensbridge, nor will it increase the cost of living in Queensbridge. The streets will see improvements in sewage and safety, more people will be, more hides on the street, and that will be saving for everybody. We also think that DCP and the city can rethink looking at the Long Island City IBZ, both north and south of the bridge, and continue to develop a long-term plan for all of us from living, working, and learning, and playing safely in the decades ahead, and to address some of those things, which I presented to DCP separately, on how to create affordable, commercial, industrial spaces, both for arts, culture, and for manufacturers. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Alan.
Thank you. The next three folks are in person. I'm going to call Brian Hunt, Connie Butler, and Jordan Hare. Brian Hunt? Okay, we'll move on to Connie Butler.
Thank you, Borough President, for the opportunity to support One LIC today. My name is Connie Butler, and I'm the Director of MoMA PS1. For nearly 50 years, MoMA PS1 has been proud to serve Long Island City through our art exhibitions, community partnerships, and free public programs, welcoming over 150,000 visitors annually and contributing millions to Long Island City. The One LIC rezoning presents a rare opportunity for our community to receive much-needed investments in several areas, including public space and arts and culture. We believe that MoMA PS1 can serve as a cultural anchor within the rezoning per-city investment. As Long Island City grows, MoMA PS1 wants to meet the moment and provide opportunities for new and existing residents to learn and grow together. We're proud to provide free admission to all New York City and New York State residents, host art-making workshops for families, amplify and celebrate Queens-based artists and organizations through our homeroom program, and host community programs in our courtyard. We also manage the Forty-Sixth Avenue Public Plaza, scheduled for a major renovation through DOT by 2028, thanks to Borough President Richard's support. This rezoning has inspired us to be more ambitious and consider new ways to provide more open, clean, accessible, and safe public spaces within LIC. Our vision includes opening up the Jackson Avenue wall, renovating our courtyard to make it an ADA-accessible green space, and revamping our first floor to create a dedicated space for learning and creative exploration for children and families. With city investment, we can not only expand our physical space, but also our arts education and community engagement programming. We look forward to continuing to engage with the community and request that the Queensborough President consider supporting city investments in cultural and public space and open space projects such as ours as part of the One LIC rezoning. We also encourage you to support policy recommendations within the plan that enhance our community's rich ecosystem of artists and cultural organizations of all scales, such as zoning incentives for affordable cultural space, a dedicated fund to support local nonprofits and artists, and new public art initiatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, Connie.
Thank you. And then Jordan Hare.
Good morning. My name is Jordan Hare. I work at Plaxall, Long Island City, and I'm raising three kids in Jackson Heights. I respectfully encourage Borough President Richards to vote in favor of the LIC neighborhood plan, which could do so much good for both Long Island City and the many other amazing neighborhoods of Western Queens. The LIC neighborhood plan would deliver vital flood protection measures at Animal Basin and points north through a combination of raised shorelines, as well as the elevation of new and existing streets. Taken together, these measures will deliver significant new protections for both the waterfront and inland areas from the threat of sea level rise. Please support this plan and vote for this plan to protect LIC from the threat of climate change. This plan is a big opportunity for the city to invest in LIC's artists, who add so much to the neighborhood. Please consider this in your deliberations and vote yes to sustain and grow the arts in Queens. Lastly, is I know a lot of people who used to live in Long Island City, but moved to places like Jackson Heights and Astoria when they have kids. Why? Not enough family-friendly apartments. This plan will make it possible for more people to raise families in Long Island City. The 4,300 units of affordable housing in this plan is nearly 45% larger than the 3,000 affordable housing units in Hunters Point South at full build. Please vote for this plan to support Queens families. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, the next three folks will be on Zoom. Rachel Britchcow, Amelia Decodin, and Lindsay McCormick. So Rachel, if you're ready, please. Rachel, please begin.
Hi, apologies. I didn't hear Rachel Brown. I heard a different last name, so that's why I didn't start right away. Hi, I live in Astoria, and I'm involved in several community-based groups working on land, housing, and food justice. And I'm here to urge the Borough President to vote no unless major changes are made to the plan. I'm concerned it's gonna adversely affect Long Island City and surrounding Queens areas in terms of housing, displacement, small businesses, and cultural workers and working artists like myself, climate resilience, and open green space. Right now, this is a plan that puts profit over people, the rich over the poor and working class. As Christina Chase mentioned, because of racial disparities in our area, it puts white and Asians over our black and Latino neighbors. The Racial Equity Report in this plan says that this area has a higher displacement risk. So DCP should be ashamed of themselves for trying to push this destructive plan through under the guise of community planning. I went to the participatory planning sessions over the last year and a half, and they were rigged towards what developers wanted from the beginning, not what current residents need. The proposed residential buildings are too high and too expensive. We do not need buildings twice as tall as the existing towers in South Long Island City, especially not on floodplains. And the majority of those units will be unaffordable market rate units. Only about 25% of the new units will be affordable units. These MIH units are based on broken area media income rates that include Westchester and Long Island. It should be flipped. We should have 75% affordable and 25% market rate. Unless you use local AMIs, the MIH levels need to be lowered to include more families making between 10% to 50% AMI like myself. So lower the height and density and make way more affordable units with guaranteed HPD subsidies. We also need to protect the public land from for-profit development. Exempt the public sites from the rezoning. Public land for public good, not for Amazon or Durst or TF Cornerstone, but for the Western Queens Community Land Trust, a community-controlled not-for-profit who can adapt the DOE building into the Queensborough People Space, creating affordable commercial rents for small businesses, working artists, and nonprofits. We need community-led development and community control of public land with the CLT. We cannot lose public land to for-profit developers. Lastly, with the proposed plan, the district will actually have less open green space per capita than it already has, as Lisa Deller and others have mentioned. It will not be resilient to increased climate change effects that we will be experiencing. We need more than a tiny boardwalk. We lack open and green space in Long Island City. We have to be responsible about climate change. And again, the Long Island City Coalition, the Hunters Point Coalition, has been working on a resilient waterfront plan for years, and it should be included. So I urge you to please put people over profit and vote no.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. The next person is Amelia.
Hi there. My name is Amelia Decodin. I'm a resident of Hunters Point South in affordable housing and a lover of this community. It's really frustrating to hear a lot of rhetoric about how this rezoning, which I support, will leave people behind or otherwise make it more difficult for people to live in New York City, when it's really the opposite that is true. Right now, we're seeing a wave of attacks on queer people, trans people in particular, on women who need to access reproductive health care across the country, in red states especially. New York City and New York State generally have modeled themselves as refuges for these people, whether it's laws specifically protecting our rights or incentives for us to be able to access health care or live here, et cetera. But none of this really matters if those folks can't afford to live here. And the unaffordability of New York City generally has been fueled by the lack of construction that has been the trend for New York for decades, starting with redlining and other racist suburban segregationist housing plans through Bloomberg's downzonings, et cetera. The fact that we have an opportunity now to build so much new housing in an area of Long Island City that is currently warehouses and streets that, to another speaker's point, are very dangerous to bike on and just mainly a lot of parked trucks is remarkable. And if we are able to pass this rezoning, which again, I fully support and hope that President Richards lends his approval to, will be able to take pressure off of housing stock that people who need to find refuge in New York or who otherwise can afford either of these places will otherwise move to. It's critical that we turn this part of Long Island City that, again, is otherwise not the best place to be walking through, to be biking through, to be living in, into a place that can accommodate thousands and thousands of people to open up access to the waterfront, so that all those people, people who already live here and anyone who visits can enjoy the East River. And to, like I said, take pressure off of our existing housing stock, which has so much demand for folks who want to enjoy New York City, who deserve to be able to enjoy our wonderful city, which I think is the greatest city in the world. Like, we really need to be able to pass something like this. We need to reverse the trend of no-building and downzonings that we've experienced in the past. I also want to say that.
You can wrap up, Amelia.
Yeah, there's been a lot of talk about shadows, and I think it's really funny to say something like that in a heatwave. I actually would really prefer if some of these buildings cast more shadows on my walk, because I'm getting sunburned.
Need more trees.
More trees too, exactly. Thank you.
Good to see you, Amelia.
You too.
Congrats.
Okay, and the next person, Lindsay McCormick.
Hi, good morning, afternoon. Still morning. I live in Jackson Heights, and I'm just calling in to express my support. I commend all the work that's gone into building this plan so far. My main reason to support it is the affordable housing, and echoing what Amelia was just saying about just the need to build, to welcome more people. I want to put in a special emphasis on the need to make sure that the transportation planning goes hand-in-hand with pedestrian and micro-mobility first. And I love Terry and Jason Benray's ideas and what DOT is working on so far, and I think we want to keep that up and take it to the next level, because these neighborhoods should be places where kids can get around safely by foot or bike, whether they're with their parents or not, where our elders can cross the street without fear. So I really encourage the simultaneous planning of traffic calming, protected bike lanes, like a previous speaker, the CUNY Fellow was talking about, and wherever possible, slow streets, reducing through traffic, because density is beautiful, and I think a lot of the negative effects that we're hearing or worries are related to having increased car traffic and troop traffic. And if we can minimize that and get more density, we're gonna have some amazing neighborhoods. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, so we're gonna do three in-person. Corey Hanigan, Isabella Bustamante, and Taiki Sugita. Again, apologies.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Corey Hanigan. I'm the Active Transportation Program Manager at Tri-State Transportation Campaign, a 30-year-old organization dedicated to improving mobility in our region. I'm also a member of CB2, which conditionally approved this plan alongside a robust and thoughtful list of recommendations that I strongly urge you to look through and consider. That said, today, I'm speaking as an individual. First, Mr. Richards, I would like to thank you for your stalwart support of affordable housing and safe mobility. I was also deeply moved by your State of the Borough, where you described diversity, equity, and inclusion not as a liability, but quite literally as our core values. The One LIC plan is very much in line with those values, and it's for that reason that I strongly support it. We simply do not have enough housing, and that is what is driving rising rents and displacement. With a citywide vacancy rate of 1.4%, legalizing apartments for tens of thousands of new neighbors, many of whom, like me, are queer and may be fleeing discrimination in other places, and thousands of new permanently and deeply affordable housing units is exactly what we need more of. That said, the draft environmental impact statement and corresponding plan are missing some key components that I hope you will help us and our council member fight for. There are significant unmitigated impacts to per-capita pedestrian and open space. The DEIS also does not consider bicycle demand in LIC of all places, nor does the neighborhood plan propose new bus lanes, despite some of the new housing being half a mile from the train. The last thing we need is 14,000 new cars in LIC, and we avoid that by offering practical and attractive alternatives. That's why DOT must produce a comprehensive street and open space plan for the full context area, not just the study area, to create more and wider bike lanes and secure public bike storage, as well as bus prioritization, new pedestrian plazas, especially under Queensborough Bridge, and a wide, lush, and continuous waterfront greenway. As a related aside, we need better traffic calming to make the vehicles stop to yield where Queensbridge Baby Park Greenway crosses Vernon Boulevard. There's no stop or anything there. And finally, I urge you to fight for a large, public, outdoor pool as part of the rezoning.
Right.
There is currently only one pool in the entirety of CB2, a pathetically small wading pool in Woodside. Frankly, with hotter and hotter summers on the horizon, this is a matter of environmental justice. So I have no doubt you will see the immense opportunity this plan offers to bring dramatic infrastructure improvements to the neighborhood while creating space for new neighbors here in the world's borough. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Isabella Bustamante, thank you.
Hi, good morning, Borough President.
Good morning.
My name is Isabella Bustamante, and I am a born and raised Queens resident who moved to Long Island City as a teenager. I have lived in the zoning area for 18 years, and I'm also the founder of Teen Arts Salon, a small grassroots nonprofit that supports, develops, and promotes adolescent artists in Court Square. The One LIC plan does not reflect our histories or futures as arts and culture organizations in this neighborhood. When my family moved to the area nearly 20 years ago, the first place they took us to was Five Points to Get Inspired. Now, most residents are unfamiliar with its legacy as a graffiti mecca filled with artist studios. Teen Arts Salon has trained artists from all five boroughs, but the decline of live workspaces and affordable artist studios means our students cannot return to the neighborhood as adults. I ask that you revise this plan by creating a central fund that developers contribute to for the arts in and around the zoning area, and that you invest in the life cycle of artists who serve and shape this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Bite me down another day.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Taiki Sugita, and I support the One LIC neighborhood plan. As someone who lives and works right here in the rezoning district, I know firsthand how tough it can be finding an apartment. That's why I support the One LIC plan. It brings thousands of new homes, including affordable housing. That's why I support the One LIC Plan. It brings thousands of new homes, including affordable housing, so I can actually see myself staying here long-term instead of worrying about being priced out. I also think about starting a family here, and knowing that One LIC will add over 1,300 new classroom seats and transforms underused spaces into parks gives me confidence that my family and my neighbor's family will have access to quality schools and public spaces we all deserve. I support One LIC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next three folks are going to be on Zoom. First name, Randy Plamel. Second name, Peter Handler. And third name, Ahmed Tamal. So Randy, if you're available, please unmute.
Good morning. My name is Randy Plamel. I'm a resident of Long Island City, a small business owner, and I have two kids in New York City Public Schools here in Long Island City. While I am a member of Queens Community Board Two and voted in favor of this neighborhood plan with stipulations, I am speaking on my behalf today. I've been part of the One LIC visiting sessions from the beginning. The community has been clear. We need more homes, improved infrastructure such as schools, and more open space, which the One LIC Neighborhood Plan contains. My family and I have had to move home three times in eight years through the housing crisis in New York City. And the neighborhood plan looks to both channel market rate development, plus requiring mandatory affordable housing, which will help bend the housing cost curve, which we've seen in other neighborhoods ranging from Jersey City to Austin. I also asked the Borough President to look for ways to speed up housing production through improvements such as fully funding DOB and HPD, and finding ways to increase the subsidy of affordable housing and a number of affordable housing units so that our neighbors can afford to stay in Long Island City. As our neighborhood grows, continued infrastructure investment is required. I particularly am in support of the plan's citing of a much-needed middle school in the neighborhood at one of the three city-owned sites at 44-59 45th Avenue to the DOT site, funding of which is currently in the SCA capital plan. I look forward to Borough President helping support the creation of many more schools, ranging from K through high schools to help meet the growing needs of the community. Finally, my kids and neighbors need more resilient, usable, open green space. I urge the Borough President to find ways to increase the amount of open space and the quality, both in the waterfront and the upland portions of Long Island City. Places to live and places to roam should be central to the plan. I ask the Borough President also to confirm and mandate the One LIC's plan use of public land for public needs, for housing, community facilities, open space, and to support local arts and artists. The One LIC Neighborhood Plan is a long-term investment in our neighborhood, and I urge the Borough President to incorporate CB2's recommendations into the neighborhood plan and make binding agreements for the investment in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony.
Testing. Sorry, next person, Peter Handler.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Borough President Richards. My name is Peter Handler. I am a Queens resident, and I'm here to support One LIC. I'm here because I strongly believe in the need for more housing. Market-rate housing, affordable housing, supportive housing, social housing, all of the above. I know people from all walks of life, city employees, young professionals, families with kids, who've had to leave New York because, in the words of the legendary Jimmy McMillan, "The rent is too damn high." In my own work with at-risk individuals with psychiatric or medical impairments, I've seen how hard it is to find new housing for vulnerable New Yorkers facing evictions. One LIC will offer 14,000 new homes and over 4,000 affordable units in a neighborhood that's close to mass transit and close to beautiful parks and the waterfront. I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, next, Ahmed Tamal.
Honorable Donovan Richards, my name is Ahmed Tamal, and I'm against the One LIC Neighborhood Plan. I speak to you today as I'm concerned resident of Astoria. I have seen many discussions regarding this plan hosted by Queens Community Board One. I've also heard your recent State of the Borough speech where you highlight the needs of Queens. Quality jobs, affordable housing, and a competitive edge for small businesses are your core objectives. In my humble opinion, this plan does not address these challenges facing Queens. An objective read of the DEIS indicates that DCP is relying heavily on minimums, such as mandatory inclusionary housing, already-established projects such as constructions of schools, and a miracle to resolve underlying issues affecting the area, such as transport and utilities. I have limited interaction with CB2, but I understand CB1 has voted yes with stipulations which has submitted to your office. These tips were thoroughly discussed and written. They should be incorporated by DCP to legitimize its goals towards a better LIC. I agree when you say, "Let's not wake up every day and pursue what is good for Donovan Richards, but also analyze how my actions affect my community." I believe you, Donovan Richards, and in that spirit, I say, Queens is not only for the money that can afford to speak on a Thursday morning such as this, but is also for the ones that live, work, and endure everyday struggles of New York City. Borough President Richards, I urge you to insist on a plan which creates more affordable housing, greater open spaces, and welcomes businesses that value their employees. I applaud you for your time and giving us a voice for the voiceless. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. The next three people in person that we will call is Pauling Sia, Christopher Lee, and Rajine Peters.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And everyone. Hi, good day. My name is Pauling Sha. I represent a group of small businesses and lots in IBZ Zone on 21st Street, between 39 and 40th Avenue. We support the plan, but it needs modified a little. Our front is Queensbridge Housing. Behind is Dutch Kill. Both mixed-use with housing. Yet, our site is being resumed as manufacturing and industrial-only. Housing not allowed. This does not reflect the reality of the area. Just visit here. How do you operate a 45-foot trailer with bus-only land, bike land, and petition in the middle of the street with kids running across? This simply is not practical and not safe. During the pandemic, homeless individuals broke in. The file department had to seal off the building. Today is like a war zone. Garbage, dump furniture, drug user, and crime. We wanted to rebuild, not just our business, but our community. We need a youth, arts, and tech center, medical and health facility, decent markets, coffee shop, community center, even a church. Davy Ham, pastor of Soul Cry Church of Long Island City, reached out to us. We share the same dream. But lenders say mixed-use without housing is not financially viable. We needed to resume as mixed-use with housing. Policy must adapt. Not every IBZ lot is the same. Please reconsider this with the reality in mind. We urge the community to modify the plan to support both jobs and homes in our IBZ lots. If housing is number one on everyone's list, then allow this place to be mixed-use as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. I had called Christopher Lee. I don't think he's here anymore. Rajine Peters.
Good morning, Borough President Richards. My name is Rajine Peters. I'm an artist, arts worker, and the Director of Development at the Chocolate Factory Theater, a performing arts-focused organization which has served Long Island City since 2004, strongly contributing to the area's vitality and growth. I strongly believe that arts and culture are essential to the health and sustainability of this neighborhood and to the city as a whole. Long Island City is an extremely important cultural destination, but it has historically been underserved in terms of infrastructure and resources. As the Borough of Queens considers its future growth, I am here to strongly advocate for the inclusion of arts and cultures in any potential plan. Access to high-quality artistic programming, just like access to parks, schools, and community spaces, must grow as the neighborhood grows if it hopes to remain vital and alive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. We love the Chocolate Factory.
And it just came to my attention, Christopher Lee is on Zoom. So if we could promote him to panelists and unmute him.
Apologies, I had to run, but I can talk virtually. Good morning, Borough President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Christopher Lee. As a Queens resident, I have serious concerns about the One LIC rezoning plan. First, the scale of this development threatens to overwhelm our neighborhoods. All Island City and surrounding areas such as Astoria already face strained schools, congested streets, and limited public services. Adding nearly 15K new housing units will only worsen traffic, overcrowding, and pressure on essential infrastructure. Second, while the plan's outs affordable housing income thresholds use don't reflect what many working families here can truly afford, this rezoning risks accelerating gentrification and displacement, pushing out long-term residents and small businesses that make our communities unique. Third, there are few binding guarantees that promise new schools, parks, and transit improvements will actually materialize. Without strong commitments and community benefit agreements, this plan prioritizes developers' profits over the needs of current residents. Finally, this rezoning feels like it's designed for investors, not people who call Queens home. We must preserve the character of our neighborhoods and ensure that any new development benefits existing communities, not just luxury markets. I urge decision-makers to listen to residents, demand deeper affordability, stronger tenant protections, and real investments in public infrastructure before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Next three people I'm going to call are on Zoom. First person, Peter Papa Michael. Second person, Lisa Gorin. And third person, Bill Jessup. So Peter, if you're ready, please begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Papa Michael. I'm the founder of the Veraya Group, a local business based right here in Long Island City. I was born and raised in Queens, and I've spent my career working to build a stronger, more resilient, and more inclusive community. I'm here today to urge Borough President Richards to vote yes on the One LIC Neighborhood Res zoning Plan. This plan is a result of years of thoughtful community engagement and planning, and it addresses some of our most urgent needs while laying the groundwork for a more equitable future. Please vote yes to create more than 1,300 new classroom seats so our children can learn in modern, uncrowded schools. Please vote yes to require all new development to comply with mandatory inclusionary housing, ensuring that affordable housing is not an afterthought but a requirement. And yes to bringing in new jobs and career opportunities and to growing a community that really needs them. Please vote yes to upgrade LIC's outdated sewer system, which has long been overburdened and under-invested in. Vote yes to require new developments to divert stormwater from our sewers, helping to reduce the combined sewer overflows that pollute our waterway, but which the IBZ desperately needs, and we experience firsthand in many of our buildings. Please vote yes to create over four acres of resilient, connected waterfront open space that you just heard the Department of City Planning present to you. It's a beautiful, accessible link between Gantry Plaza State Park and Queensborough Bridge Park for all New Yorkers to enjoy. This isn't just a rezoning plan. It's a vision for the future of LIC that balances growth with sustainability, equity, and community investment. Please support this plan. I know we do, and let's build a stronger LIC together. Thank you so much for all your work and your dedication to our borough, the best borough in New York City.
I concur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Gorin, next person.
Hello, and thank you. I'm Lisa Gorin, speaking for LIC Coalition and Hunter's Point Community Coalition against the plan as it currently stands. The question is not whether to develop Hunter's Point North, but about what that development should look like and how its economic benefits should be distributed. It's about what it means to have a vibrant, safe neighborhood with long-term value and widespread opportunity. Unfortunately, some in the community support the plan because they have the misleading impression that it improves existing problems when, in fact, it exacerbates them. Unlike LICC HPCC's community-based Vision Plan for Resiliency, which offers a serious roadmap for forward-thinking development that addresses existing problems and LIC's future needs, One LIC contains no mitigation for impacts to open space. It brings the neighborhood from third lowest to the lowest in the city on a per capita basis. School seats pushes school seat utilization to 143% with a projected deficit of over 2,000 school seats. Crumbling infrastructure and stormwater and CSO management. CSOs that go stormwater and CSOs that go everywhere, flooding basements and ground floors in buildings by the water and upland, and disadvantaged communities and businesses in the IBZ where One LIC will cause displacement rather than new innovative businesses that can be connected, and a plan to connect LIC's business zone to other business zones along the Brooklyn waterfront, and to cultural organizations that are being removed. Moreover, there is no justification for the dramatic increase in floor-area ratio throughout the plan. Why are 100-plus-story super-tall towers needed to achieve 4,000 below-market apartments? We're giving developers billions in new value and giving residents here minimal benefits in return. Lesser actions, mid-level plans with low-to-mid-rise density and live-work spaces in the IBZ are not explored, even though studies show the city can achieve its housing goals without harming the character of neighborhoods or building in the city's floodplains. Finally, Hunter's Point sits in an extremely vulnerable floodplain, and public properties at Annable Basin were submerged beneath over six feet of water during Hurricane Sandy. Those public sites, which are in an evacuation zone, are simply unsafe for residential buildings. Yet, the DCP wants to place the lowest-income new residents there. These last precious public waterfront properties are needed for open space and for truly effective flood protection. The city is spending, right now, spending billions in taxpayer dollars on the Manhattan side of the East River to create resiliency, while encouraging development in the floodplains on the Queens and Brooklyn side that will put the neighborhood in harm's way and create billions of dollars in future costs. A contiguous waterfront park, not a little walkway, would provide truly robust resiliency, which is not in the One LIC plan. It would mitigate open space needs, and it would help channel stormwater runoff. It would anchor the new neighborhood, particularly with the Western Queens Community Land Trust's proposed community services, arts, and light manufacturing hub at the DOE Building, and act as a tremendous economic engine benefiting Hunter's Point South and Queensbridge residents to the north. Just if the parks at Hunter's Point South have done. Just try to imagine what LIC would be like if the parks at Hunter's Point South disappeared, replaced by a mere walking path along the river.
And I should have been-
Consider how that would diminish quality of life, economic activity, and value, including value to the developers. Decisions today will have a huge impact, not just on LIC, but given the scale of the proposed towers on New York City as a whole and for decades to come. We should be bringing public and private sectors together to negotiate much better terms for the community and to develop a plan that is safe, balanced, and economically smart for everyone and for the future. A plan that will bring long-term health, wealth- A plan that will bring long-term health, wealth, and vibrancy to this extraordinary neighborhood.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, we're very over time. We need to move on. Thank you for your testimony.
I finished. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person was Bill Jessup?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning Borough President Richards. My name is Bill Jessup, and I am owner and the CFO of National Acoustics Holdings, Inc. I am against the item presented today. Since 1939, National Acoustics has been building New York City. We are 100% union construction subcontractor in our 86 years. We've built millions of square feet of office space in New York City, as well as hundreds of public projects for the city and the state, mostly through the School Construction Authority. Hundreds of union workers operate from our headquarters at 1306 43rd Avenue, which is on Block 442, Lot 5. We are working on over 20 projects today, building both new construction and renovation projects to advance our great city. After a year of dedicated participation in the process, we wholeheartedly endorsed this proposal based on a May 6, 2025 detailed zoning map put forth by the DCP. Unfortunately, the map displayed this morning was not the May 6 map. Today's map showed Block 442, split-zoned M14A, and the other half, M16A. We feel National Acoustics should enjoy the same M16A zoning rights as its adjacent neighbors at 4310 21st Street and 1305 43rd Avenue. Perhaps the displayed map is in error. Hopefully, I can seek some clarification. My testimony changed drastically because of the map I saw this morning. I will send the rest of my testimony in writing, and thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you. DCP, is that true? All right, so they're going to look at the map again, and if you could follow up with Vicky, and we could follow back up. If you can make sure we, well, I'm sure we have his information, so we can follow up with him.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. So the next three people I'm going to call are in person. Tom Metusis, Peter Birmingham, and Dennis Ibric.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tom Metusis, lifelong resident of Blissville, member of the Board of Directors with Newtown Creek Alliance, Executive Board Member with NYPD 108 Precinct, Community Council, and past member of Community Board Two. Today, I'm here as a representative of Blissville Civic Association. We call upon the Honorable Donovan Richards to support the One Long Island City Plan that includes CB2's recommendation to invest in Blissville. Borough President, we thank you for your many visits to Blissville. We are grateful, and we know that today's ask you will be very familiar. Blissville is Long Island City, and Blissville is a New York City Planning-identified community in the context area. And since the beginning, we have sought equity, inclusion, and investments. New York City Planning did include us. As required by state law, New York City Planning included Blissville, since it's Track 199, in the DEIS. But sir, it's not enough. The inclusion we seek is not just to tell us about the harm that might come our way. We seek investments as well. As Jason Banbury identified earlier, we are grateful to CB2 and Department of Parks and DOT for the work that is underway on two initiatives. Ten years in the making, the Blissville Greenway and our Veterans Memorial. Sir, you're invited to the ribbon cutting, by the way. And we seek more. Our asks are simple, doable, a comprehensive street tree initiative to help combat pollution, reduce the effects of the herb and heat item, remove rain from our sewage system, and enhance the overall being of those who live, work, and shelter in Blissville. A rain garden initiative targeted specifically for Blissville to help remove stormwater from the over-saturated sewer system. And sir, a park that you're familiar with. We stood together at this park, the 29th Street Park behind LaGuardia Community College. The Borough, the president of the college, Newtown Creek Alliance, Blissville Civic have each called to expand the footprint of parkland in this project to include the context area. We have that opportunity with the 29th Street Park. Our asks are reasonable and achievable, and we have full confidence in Councilmember Juan to negotiate these asks. We implore you Borough President to pass the One Long Island City Plan inclusive of Community Board Two. Blissville Civics ask to be included. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, I had called Peter Birmingham and Dennis Ibric. Okay, so we're going to have to take a 10-minute break at this time. I appreciate everyone's patience and for listening to so many testimonials. I'm going to hit the timer now, and in 10 minutes, we will resume. So thank you very much. Feel free to use the restroom or anything else you need. Okay, I don't think your name was written. Hi, we are going to resume the hearing. The Borough President will return, but he has given our blessing to continue in the interest of time. So if everyone could please take their seat, we're going to resume in about 30 seconds. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. And just a friendly reminder to those who are not able to stay this whole hearing, I apologize for the length, but we are just trying to hear everyone as expeditiously as we can. Written testimony, you can submit it to planning2@queensbp.nyc.gov. I'll say that again. It's planning2@queensbp.nyc.gov. And we will be able to receive your written testimony, and we ask that you send it by 5 o'clock today. If you send it after 5, a few minutes after, that's fine. But we just would like to get everyone to have their written testimony in a timely manner. So we are going to go ahead and resume. I just want to double-check Dennis Ibric and Peter Birmingham. Okay, Dennis, if you can go ahead and start your testimony.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dennis Ibric. I'm a council representative of the New York City District Council of Carpenters. We are in strong support of the One LIC plan. It is rare that we have an opportunity to address our city's two biggest needs at once, housing and jobs. This plan does that, making way for thousands of new units of housing and good-paying construction jobs. We can all feel the strain of the housing crisis that it put on New York workers. But this plan would build almost 15,000 units of housing, including many affordable units. The difference that would make to alleviate this struggle is huge. What makes this plan really special is that because of the 485X tax incentive program, much of the housing that will be developed in Long Island City will be built using well-paid, highly-skilled construction workers. Under 485X, the developers building in Long Island City, among other neighborhoods in Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Queens, are required to pay workers the type of wages that commensurate with the difficult, physically demanding work of building this city. This gives unions a fair shot to fight for these projects and elevates our entire industry. And all of this does not even mention the new schools, waterfront resiliency, and infrastructure upgrades. All of this would be, would bring incredible benefits to the community and create more jobs. For this reason, the New York City District Council of Carpenters stands behind this plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we're going to turn to the next three folks on Zoom. First person is Sheila Lewandowski. Next person is Ping Yun, and the third person is Deanne Gorman. Sheila, if you're ready, please unmute and begin your testimony.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. Thank you Borough President for having the hearing. My name is Sheila Lewandowski, and I'm speaking today as a 28-year resident of Long Island City and founder and executive director of the Chocolate Factory Theater. Although, as you know Borough President, just a few more days, my hand, the reins over. I'm here today to push for more investment in arts and culture as part of this rezoning, as well as more public open green space. I believe the 15 pages of stipulations by Community Board to help address these needs, but more investment and hard commitments are needed. As shared by my friend and colleague, Carisha Baton of Queensborough Dance Festival, over 100 arts organizations of all sizes, mostly transient, serving many thousands of people and attracting hundreds of thousands of people to the area, have been identified. I think there's an opportunity to make permanent spaces available and help preserve artist and artisan studios and small manufacturing spaces. I also support a fund that all participating developers be required to invest in, managed by a third party, be created as a dedicated funding stream to help local artists and arts organizations. Lastly, I strongly push for more public open green space, especially larger active sites with real grass and opportunities for large public gatherings and to help mitigate flooding and environmental shortcomings of the area. The final plan should not bring the percentage of public open green space per capita down. It should bring it up. And arts and culture needs to be publicly supported at the highest level right now, especially when freedom of expression and speech is being oppressed, suppressed, and manipulated. So New York will be a sanctuary. Queens is the innovation borough and where arts and culture thrives. So please make this part of the investment in arts and culture, and I thank you again.
Great, thank you. Next person, Ping? Okay, moving on to Deanne Gorman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Deanne Gorman, I've lived in Astoria 25 years, and then within the CB1 area, Community Board One area, and I echo all concerns raised by the community so far regarding One LIC. I've also had a job on 57th Street in Manhattan these 25 years and have witnessed the building boom on that street of massive towers, which also have massive vacancies with no sunlight on the streets anymore as a result. That midtown area may not be the same as this proposal, and I did move long ago to this big city with all its buildings and people and do recognize the need for housing. But I moved here to stay, to live here long-term. One LIC is more short-term gratification for developers, the wealthier, and construction jobs that will eventually end. The Queensborough Bridge, Long Island City hub, is a glut of traffic, noise, smells, glass highrises, lack of space and sunlight, empty storefronts, garbage. And I'm told by my working neighbors that union labor has often been bypassed on these projects, despite promises. How can buildings so out of character for this neighborhood at unaffordable prices, meant to add so many more people to an already vulnerable area, even be considered? More traffic and transit woes? Even less sunlight and open space? Overload to the power grid? Sewage overflow when the city gets less than an inch of rain? Coastal flood zones? Recall Superstorm Sandy and sinkholes which already exist in this area. The environmental impacts have not been realistically considered or forecasted. Whatever we all envision a city to be, it should be fair, realistic, and sustainable. One LIC is not. As president of our culturally rich and diverse Borough of Queens, please be committed to lower-income housing. This rezoning essentially locks out NYCHA residents from obtaining the MIH units. Also, be a champion for climate justice. This plan lacks resiliency. Please vote no and put the people and planet deserving better over the profits of developers. Thank you so much for your serious considerations.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay, the next three people I'm going to call are in person, and apologies for the pronunciation. Edjo Wheeler, Ernest Brooks, and Shirley Aubin.
Hello, thank you for your time, Borough President Richards. Good morning, I'm Edjo Wheeler, founder and executive director of Culture Lab LIC. Mr. Richards, through your leadership, we have an unprecedented opportunity to shape a thriving neighborhood from the ground up, one that truly reflects the people who live and create here. But that can only happen if the arts are structurally integrated into the plan. Leaving them out would not only ignore the overwhelming community input, it would overlook the LIC's most powerful economic, social, and civic assets. No one group should be getting funding from this. The arts funding should go into a fund that is then shared amongst the organizations, primarily that are in the impact zone. Not just the impact zone, but the actual rezoning. That should be both capital and expense. There are already 111 small-budget arts organizations and independent artists within the rezoning footprint. That is what needs to be protected first, not individual arts organizations when there was not an open call for proposals for that. We operate from donated space. We host over 60,000 guests annually and support 260 events a year, concerts, exhibitions, theaters, and we are in partnership with two dozen local nonprofits. Our presence alone generates 2.5 million for the local economy. Other arts organizations would do the same. Although great work was done, the neighborhood plan still makes no mention of arts and culture. That's why we're asking for four distinct solutions. Zoning initiatives for developers to provide long-term free or below-market space for nonprofit arts organizations. A developer-funded LIC Arts Fund, managed by a third-party nonprofit with full transparency and priority is given to smaller organizations inside the rezoning area. Investment in cultural infrastructure. Include a permanent outdoor amphitheater, local artist-led public installations and programming, and finally, a partnership with schools and city agencies to embed arts into long-term future for this neighborhood. If we get this right, LIC becomes a national model for cultural-driven development that affects visitors' investment and long-term growth. If we get it wrong, we lose our biggest draw and the key driver to local economy. One LIC Working Group has done meaningful work, but please, Mr. Richards, ensure that the final plan reflects what the community actually asked for because the arts did not make the draft. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Ernest Brooks?
Well, I was hoping to be able to thank Donovan directly for providing this opportunity. But I do wanna say I ask him to reject the plan unless it includes a lot of changes and good ones have been recommended by CB2, CB1. It has to be changed in the direction of equity, resilience, and just modesty. I mean, it is so lacking in human scale. I wonder if the people who come up with positive comments about One LIC have actually seen the massing studies and understand the enormity of what's gonna be changed. I've lived for 47 years on the corner of Vernon Boulevard and 44th Drive. Just the construction noise and disruption that will happen if they build a 100-story skyscraper a block from me is scary to think about. When they built the Wyndham Garden Hotel, which is, I don't know, 100, 100 feet maybe behind our building, that's a six-story building. The pile drivers, every time they, you know, stamp those things into the ground with the foundation plates would fall off our shelves. It's an old brick building, it's a loft building. And I gotta say, again, human scale is important. Another thing I wanna speak to is, for years, and it's worsened after they built that hotel, which was another, I mean, the whole neighborhood has gotten much, obviously, it's already had so much new construction over the last 10, 15 years. We do not need 14,000 new units. Yes, we need affordable units, but we do not need redevelopment on that scale, partly because they have not done the work to repair and enlarge the sewer system. There is a problem after rain, even moderate rain, sewage backs up in the elevator shaft in our building. They've talked about fixing that. The landlord replaced the line going out to the street. That didn't solve the problem. Again, the DEP came, they did come, Nick Galatas, who works for Julie Wan, brought them to our building to look at the problem. But again, there's been money promised for sewage reconstruction for years. I remember when they were talking about a city plan, no, redevelopment rezoning plan, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, there was supposedly $90 million for that infrastructure. It disappeared. When Amazon was pushing to get into the neighborhood, it was promised again. It didn't happen, and it still hasn't happened. If this is going to be accepted, there has to be repairs to the infrastructure first. It can't just be a promise, it doesn't happen. And I also wanna say, given that what upzoning ends up doing is giving a lot of money to developers, do we really wanna allow that in the day where we see?
Thank you, yeah.
Where we see throughout this country a massive upward transfer of wealth, and this has become worse over the last, well, we know where it's going, given who's in charge of the country right now. Do we wanna see that replicated in our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your testimony. Shirley?
Good morning. For the record, I am Queens Borough President's appointee to the panel for educational policy. I'm here in the capacity as a Queens resident, youth, education, and community advocate, and I have three brief points that I would like to address. First, we are doing more elementary schools in the area, but we have to make sure we ensure that middle schools, we have enough middle schools to feed in and to be in compliance of the New York State smaller class size, right? And more importantly, our children deserve the benefits of having a smaller class size. So we have to ensure middle schools. I know that they said they didn't cite for more high schools. We're already short in the borough, a lot of high school seats. Almost half of our high schoolers are going out of borough. But creating a brand-new high school doesn't always necessarily mean is a solution, which brings to my second point. Baccalaureate High School needs more space. They don't have a conducive space to have a real enriched academic high school experience. It's a hidden gem, one of our hidden gems in our borough, and they are high in demand. So if we give them a space where they can expand, that will also help have more high school seats as well. And as I was gonna be brief, and the next one, again, high schools, but this is on a different issue. So the Long Island City campus, we have Board High School. We have the Academy of Finance and Enterprise in the High School of Applied Communications. Now, they need internet access or stronger internet access. They have, we need to create a stronger structure for connectivity and broadband. We have three high schools there, and the internet is, I'm gonna say, it sucks. So they really need to have, again, a conducive high school experience. We need to also to increase their activity, internet access in their schools, and thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And again, thank you, everyone, for your patience. This is a very long hearing, so thank you. I'm gonna move to three folks on Zoom, and I actually called them earlier, and I'm gonna call them again. They're back on Zoom. Kieran Gallagher, Charlene Ogbeny, and Ping Yun. So, Kieran, Karen, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. You can begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So, I mean, I'd like to speak in favor of One LIC plan and definitely urge the Borough President to support it. For me, this is a very, very simple issue. I know everyone has demands for their community that they want to attach to this kind of plan, and I very much commend them for doing that and trying to support their community. But for me, the overwhelming need of our whole community is more housing. It is completely inescapable. That the biggest pressure in everyone's lives here is the ongoing rise of rent. And it's very clear that the cause of rising rent is lack of new housing, lack of construction. If you look at places like Austin and Minneapolis, where these restrictions on the addition of denser housing have been removed, they have now bent the cost curve, rents are now falling. And as much as we like to drag developers with the mud here in Austin and in Minneapolis, they're actually at risk of losing money because they have built so much. And that has been a wonderful thing for the residents of those cities, for people who want to move to those cities because they view them as places of arts and culture where they can practice that. I think that, you know, if we are going to expand our community, if we want to live in a dense city where we have interconnection with people from different cultures, from different worldviews, there's no way to do that without adding density to the city. I think it seems really strange to talk about neighborhood character and culture without recognizing that density is actually the defining quality of New York City's culture and development. It's what brings so many people together to be able to share their niche interests, to be able to create specialized cultures and unique art that you wouldn't be able to find in places where you only have a small market or a small community to find like-minded people in. So for me, this is absolutely essential. I'd also like to talk about the market rate housing. Now, I know we talk a lot about the need for affordable housing, but here's the thing about the market rate house. Probably, there's gonna be around 10,000 units of it. That's probably about 20,000 people. Now, those 20,000 people are not going to vanish in thin air because you don't create those houses. They are going, they presumably have means, and they want to live in New York City because they have jobs here. And they are going to come and knock on my landlady's door and offer her to pay more money than I can if you don't build those units. So the idea that market units are somehow completely antifertical to affordable housing is absurd. If you don't build some market rate units, what will happen is other units will become more pricey. They will come and bid up where you are currently living. I live in Sunnyside right now. I know that actually the units-
Please wrap up your testimony.
Thank you very much, I think I've said my piece.
Thank you, sorry. We're gonna try to adhere more strictly to the two-minute rule since we are still hearing from folks. The next person is Charlene Ogbeny. Okay, we're gonna move on then to Ping Yun.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Oh, hi, thank you. My name is Ping Young, and I'm a resident of Long Island City. My family and I moved to Long Island City in 2022, and I'm raising three kids in this neighborhood. I am speaking in support of the One LIC plan, and I urge Borough President Richards to vote yes on One LIC. The area that's proposed to be developed is within a few walks of my apartment. As a resident of this neighborhood, I want to see this area redeveloped for the benefit of myself, my family, and all my neighbors and the entire community. Right now, as everyone has talked about, and as it is apparent everywhere, New York City is suffering from a housing crisis. And the reason for that lack of, for that crisis is the lack of supply. Supply and demand is what determines market rate apartment pricing. This plan is a part of the solution. It adds both market rate and affordable housing units. And as the previous speaker very well, I felt like laid out, market rate apartments are a very important part of the solution to the housing crisis. The area, as it currently is, is an underutilized area that feels vacant and abandoned, and I don't feel comfortable walking there with my kids. While I hear all these different ideas everyone has, and some of them are very interesting and I think, you know, could be very beneficial, I think we need to be realistic. No plan's ever gonna be perfect. No plan will ever make every single person happy and be financially workable. Discussions over developing this area has been ongoing long before my family and I moved here, and nothing's ever happened. I would, if this isn't approved, I can see my children growing up and having the same discussion, again, when they're adults. One idea has, one LIC has been worked on by many different agencies and voices within the city and the community. For all the people who say they haven't been heard, all of these meetings, this is where you voice your opinion, and I don't believe that's the case. I think the plan that's come out is a good outcome, which means that not everyone gets what they want. It's a compromise. I say let's vote yes and let's make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And so now, I am gonna call the last four people that I have on my list for in-person testimony. And if I'm wrong, don't worry, we will have a last call at the end to make sure everyone is able to give their testimony. So I'm gonna call four names. Eric Norberg, Rachel Cohen, William- William Jordane, and William Zoo, or Shu, excuse me. Are any of those folks here? Okay, feel free to come up to the podium and please state your name.
And if you haven't signed in to testify, now is your moment. You can come up if you're here in person.
I like the costume change with the button.
Oh, yes, we just did a press conference. Brand new bus redesign for Queens is done.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Rachel Cohen, and my family and I have been a part of the Long Island City community for many decades. I am also representing the Vraya Group, which, as Peter mentioned, is a Long Island City-based property owner. And we're the maintenance partner of the 12th Street Plaza and have brought dozens of businesses and artists and makers to that pocket of Long Island City. I'm here today in support of the One LIC Neighborhood Plan. It is evident from the passionate hearings and community meetings that have taken place that we all care deeply about LIC and its future. This historic investment into a very special neighborhood is a necessary path forward. Long Island City is a neighborhood built on community, but right now it's fragmented by disconnected public spaces, aging infrastructure, and the lack of access to affordable housing in schools. One LIC addresses those gaps head-on. It links our waterfronts, our waterfront parks, building oh, building open space where it currently doesn't exist. It creates housing that working families can actually afford. It is an investment into critical neighborhood needs such as schools and systems. This plan is about creating the connections, physical and social, that will allow LIC to prosper. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi. Good afternoon, Borough President. My name is William Zu. I'm currently a Long Island City resident and a lifelong Queens resident. I also work for United Construction and Development Group, which is a family-owned business based in Queens that my uncle started in the 90s. Our company has built homes for countless families throughout the borough, and that includes families of all sizes and income levels. I'm here today to ask for your support in the One LIC Neighborhood Plan because our city needs more housing, and more importantly, our borough needs more housing. This plan will bring over 14,000 new apartments and 4,300 permanently affordable apartments to the market. But it will also bring more waterfront open space for the residents and also more commercial and manufacturing space to allow for small businesses to grow. Long Island City has become a neighborhood where many people want to live. This plan will ensure that the new neighborhood can welcome new neighbors without displacing the people that already call LIC home. Building more housing should not be controversial during a housing crisis, and I truly urge you to support the One LIC Neighborhood Plan. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, peace, love, and happiness, everyone. I guess we're saving the best for last. My name is William Jordane, and I am the Executive Director for Woodside on the Move. For nearly 50 years, we've served Queens through tenant advocacy, after-school programs, and community development. The One LIC rezoning may be an opportunity, but only if it delivers real lasting investment for the communities that have made this borough what it is. After engaging over 900 residents, we've heard clear priorities, and those priorities are affordable housing, NYCHA reinvestment, open space, tenant protections, and youth programming. So I echo the priorities you flagged to the various city agencies, Borough President, and thank you for asking the questions you asked earlier. They were actually resounding, so thank you. I'm not here to be a contrarian without at least listening and having a discussion. However, I believe in order to meet the promise of the priorities I echoed previously, we need to go further. I'm asking you, Borough President, to consider a community benefits agreement that directly supports local nonprofits already serving the community. Organizations like ours are essential for infrastructure, helping families stay housed, supporting young people, and strengthening our neighborhoods. But we can't scale to meet growing needs without long-term support. So this isn't just about LIC. It's about setting a precedent for equitable growth across Queens, and we urge you, or I urge you, to make sure that no one is left behind, especially nonprofits. Thank you, Borough President.
So good to see you. Thank you.
Always good to see you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have anyone else signed up to testify in person. We have a few more on Zoom, but I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Okay, so then we will move on to folks that are on Zoom. Thank you again for your patience. The next person I'm going to call is Mateo Cologne. The second person is Autumn Middleton, and the third person is Kenny Greenberg. So Mateo, when you're ready, please unmute.
Can you all hear and see me?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon, Borough President Richards and staff. My name is Mateo Cologne, representing the Public Affairs Team at the New York Building Congress. We're a membership association representing over 500 organizations and 250,000 skilled tradespeople and professionals committed to the growth and prosperity of our city. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. The Building Congress strongly supports the One LIC Neighborhood Plan, a comprehensive initiative that addresses Long Island City's pressing needs for affordable housing, public open spaces, and resilient infrastructure. LIC is at the forefront of the city's housing challenges, with nearly half of renters spending more than 30% of their income on rent. The plan proposes the creation of approximately 14,700 new homes, including over 4,000 permanently affordable units. This is an essential step towards fixing our housing crisis while ensuring that new developments include housing for families at all income levels. The plan envisions transforming underutilized areas beneath the Queens Borough Bridge into vibrant public spaces, reconnecting the Queensbridge Houses with the broader community, and addressing the critical need for increased open space in the neighborhood. Additionally, the plan aims to unify the waterfront from Ganshi Plaza State Park to Queensbridge, creating a continuous publicly accessible esplanade that enhances recreational opportunities and waterfront access for all residents. One LIC includes investments in sewage and plumbing infrastructure to address current flooding issues and prepare the neighborhood for future development. The plan also provides for the addition of over 1,300 new classroom seats, ensuring that educational facilities keep pace with population growth. The plan reflects extensive community engagement, incorporating feedback from over 1,600 participants across 15 public meetings, as well as thousands of comments and survey responses. This collaborative approach ensures that development aligns with the community's priorities and needs. Simply put, the One LIC Neighborhood Plan offers a thoughtful roadmap to addressing New York's housing crisis, and the Building Congress urges its approval. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much. The next person is Autumn Middleton. Okay, we're going to move on to Kenny Greenberg.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenny Greenberg. I oppose as it presently stands. I've lived and worked in Hunter's Point for four decades. I am an artisan tenant, a homeowner, and a landlord. I formed and chair three local art organizations, and I served as Chair of two committees on Community Board Two, although I speak in a personal capacity. I urge the Borough President to please listen to the recommendations from our community board and our local organizations. Funded by State Senators Giannaris and Gonzalez, the LIC Coalition found huge gaps in the draft EIS. Serious existing deficiencies remain unmitigated, and the plan as it stands will make things worse. Housing, our most vulnerable within the floodplain, is a terrible idea. It is potentially catastrophic. The impact on the arts and small businesses is equally devastating. The resiliency measures are based on older FEMA maps. They are not keeping up with present science. We can achieve a more equitable and sustainable plan without severely damaging the present and future LIC. I asked the DCP, why was it, why was a moderate alternate plan not even considered? I also want to address the belief that rents will come down by building more. Long Island City has been one of the fastest-growing communities in the country. We've had multiple rezonings over the past decades, and rents have just skyrocketed, skyrocketed to where one of the most unaffordable. I don't doubt that if we were to somehow build gazillions-time more housing, somehow that formula would finally work out. But it's not realistic, and it's not part of this plan. So what's going to happen is the exact opposite. We're going to see increased gentrification, which is really not necessary. We're essentially bargaining a small, tiny amount of affordable, barely affordable apartments for far more, by far more, more than two to three times more market rate. I please ask the Borough President respectfully to review the proposals that the LIC Coalition's alternate plan has, as well as the hard work of our community board. As I was a participant for, we put in some 25 hours just in the past month alone in meetings to develop what we consider very serious and thoughtful recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next person is Andreas Miggas. I'm sorry, Andreas Miggas?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right, my name is Andreas Miggas. I am a board member on Community Board One, and I'm speaking on behalf of the board. Our, our community board, our Land Use Committee, has taken a deep dive into this project, and ultimately, as a board, we voted to conditionally approve the One LIC Neighborhood Plan with stipulations, and we believe that the stipulations are very important. The board generally recognized the need for new housing and sustainable initiatives, and we welcome proposals to change the usage of underutilized land. However, at the same time, the board concurrently identified significant concerns regarding the project's potential impacts on public infrastructure, transit systems, neighborhood character, public open space, and the availability of deeply affordable housing for New Yorkers. And we believe that the city must pair the board's goal, the boards and the city's goal of affordability, sustainability, and accessibility with a clear cohesive multi-agency plan, complete with tangible investments and commitments to address all the impacts of the proposed zoning plan and stipulations for approval. And what that looks like is in ensuring that there is affordable housing for residents nearby, making sure that the proposed development fits contextually with the rest of the neighborhood, making sure that there are investments within our, our, our public infrastructure when it comes to sewage and transportation and education. So we'd like to see all those things with the increase in new housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. The next three people I'm going to call on Zoom, Red Sevilla, Andre Irving, and Crystal Zoo. Red, if you're there, please unmute and begin your testimony.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for this time. My name is Red Sevilla. I'm a local church pastor, and I'm against this rezoning. I'm here because my daughter goes to high school in LIC next to the oval turf by the water. My family doesn't live in LIC. We can't afford it when the average two-bedroom rent is more than $4,000 a month. My daughter's school friends don't live in LIC either. LIC priced them out. LIC says, sure, come to school in LIC, but you can't live here. You can't afford it. And options one to three of MIH are a joke. They don't do enough affordability when 70% to 90% of new housing units are at market rate. True affordability is when at least half of a new building is affordable at 40% to 65% AMI. I urge the Borough President, Borough President Richards, I voted for you. I believe in you. Could you be the one that flips it so that 70% of new buildings are affordable and 30% is market rate? True affordability is when most of a building, again, is affordable at AMI levels of 40% to 60%. I urge you to vote no to a pathetic amount of affordable housing in a tsunami of luxury developments. A rezoning like this allows builders to build in our neighborhoods, but not for our neighbors. Say no to this plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Next person is Andre.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Mr. Donovan. I am a longtime Queens resident. I am also now a business owner. I own and operate and direct Coca-Cola Dance Company. We are a teaching as well as performing institution based in Long Island City, and I'm pushing for advocacy for arts and culture development and support from any development plan that may be coming into the area. Queens is known as the most diverse block of square mileage within the country, and a lot of that is how cultures intersect and meet with each other and exchange whatever it is that they come from or bring from their backgrounds. So art spaces are very, very important because that's where a lot of cultural exchange does happen, whether it's dance, like my institution provides, or sculpture, or painting, or anything from, you know, music, all of the above, all that stuff. They need places to rehearse, to perform, to present what they have, because that allows all those communities to grow. It makes everybody that much richer. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next person, Crystal Zoo.
Hi, everyone. It's Crystal Sue. I'm Crystal. Oh, you can hear me. Great. I'm Crystal Sue, and I've been living in Court Square for almost five years, and my partner and I are expecting our first child in September. As a soon-to-be mother, I have new concerns and responsibilities that impact our future family. When time comes, I hope to see more public school seats for our family to grow into, and I support and want to see the One LIC Plan move forward for the future of the LIC children and to enjoy more open spaces and waterfront access as their backyard. I think the affordable housing component is priority to welcoming new residents and making sure all residents from different life cycles, ranging from students, young families, and elderly people can easily continue to live and enjoy the LIC neighborhood for years to come. I am in favor of the One LIC. I'm very excited to see more school seats, the waterfront accessway, connected, sorry, and offer more affordable housing for future generations to enjoy. Please say yes to One LIC, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. The last name that I have is Larry Sullivan.
Larry Sullivan.
Oh, that's, that's the same person. Lauren Sullivan?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for, for having me today.
May I want to mute one of your devices?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, was that?
All right. That's better. Thank.
Okay. So, good morning. I'm Lauren Sullivan. I'm a doctor and been working in Long Island City with my family for almost 50 years, and we've had businesses, union, with union employees, and we've invested in this community. Several properties and had rent-controlled apartment buildings, and we've been part of the livelihood, lifeblood of this community for decades. And one LIC plan gets many things right, but it must be bold enough to include those of us who have already proven our commitment to Long Island City. We're not absentee landlords or outside investors. We are here on the ground, raising families, holding this community to every way of change. As you shape this plan, I urge you, don't draw the line just a few blocks too soon. Don't leave out the very people who've been holding the line all along. We support this vision, and we ask to be a part of it, the fair, inclusive zoning.
Sorry, Lawrence. Could you please wrap up? It's been a little hard to hear your testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry. So please vote yes, and please don't forget the small businesses and families who've invested many decades into their lives.
Diane, just one moment. Lawrence?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Person is Diane Hendry. Thank you for your patience.
Diane.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Diane Hendry, and I'm a 30-year resident, owner, renter, and artist in Long Island City. Lawrence, you still have your videos on. It's messing everybody up. Can you?
He's muted, so.
You could just mute him a moment.
Okay. So I've lost countless friends and neighbors because rents have skyrocketed with development in Long Island City. Borough President, several years ago, at a Plaxton Christmas Borough President, several years ago at a Plaxton Christmas party, you told me that you were going to build big in Long Island City. When I questioned you about climate change, sea level rise, and 70-story towers on the waterfront, your response was, I am this close to Hakeem Jeffries, so I can get funding when it floods. The problem with the D C P plan is that because this is built up high, water is going to go around to the lowest point. In this plan, most seeker objectives are, don't hit the spot. And including resiliency and equity by placing Queensbridge in darkness from 70-story towers, as well as gentrification in the I B Z zone. Van Jones, who is a climate expert, clearly states that buildings are far more harmful to the environment than cars. And he offers the solution of building net zero beyond the Blackwater Systems proposed. Borough President, you have done this already, and I would like to see you make it mandatory for new construction to be net zero in addition to lowering the proposed F A R in height and density. The open space proposed will make us the lowest in five boroughs. The F A R given to make open space in this plan defeats the objective because it will now be in shadow. The pretty little picture of Gordon Park in D C P's plan is going to be in darkness all day long. In addition to, I see that it's misplaced my neighbor. There needs to be a pedestrian bridge linking both sides of the animal basin and artist live workspace in additional, in addition to affordable housing. This is what the Plaxtons wanted years ago, and D C P would not approve it. We need to protect our artists by having affordable live-work artist space. The E D C's Blue Highway program needs to also be connected to the I B Z zone. I am against this proposal as it is, and I please wish you to examine C B two's ulterior plans very, very closely, and I hope you fight for more resiliency. LIC Coalition.
Your two minutes is up, so please wrap up.
Just, just, I have a question for, for Donovan Richards, because we spoke with residents at Queensbridge. They had great plans on suggestions to make the Terracotta Works, a Queensbridge museum with artists and a performing space behind it. I just want to know why, Mr. Richards, you have not met with Long Island City Coalition and looked at a lot of what residents have asked for.
Well, I have seen some of the plans, and this is the purpose of this hearing. And if the Coalition wants to meet with me, I'm not sure that you've requested. I, I meet with everybody, whether you're opposed or.
We've asked several times.
So, I mean, I have not received any formal requests, so if you have, you can send that to
Thank you, I will.
B R E at queensv p dot N Y C dot G O V. And that's my scheduler's direct email, but to my knowledge, I haven't seen any requests. And I would be happy to meet with you as well in the Coalition. Doesn't mean we have to agree on everything, but we're always open to meeting with everyone.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
And I do want to note on the record, we did receive written testimony. And a few folks that testified today are also a part of the LIC Coalition. So with that, I'm going to just do last call for anyone who would like to testify, both on Zoom. Okay, I see Charlene Ogbeny raised her hand. When you're ready, please begin your testimony.
Charlene.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you Borough President for allowing me to speak. My name is Charlene Ogbeny and I'm here to express my strong opposition to the current One LIC plan. Not because I'm against development, because I'm against a vision that ignores the present healthcare needs of our community. In the public listening sessions, healthcare was one of the most frequently raised concerns. And yet, this plan completely fails to address it. Long Island City is a rapidly growing neighborhood full of families, but there is no investment in infrastructure that supports these families. As a birth worker, lactation consultant, and eternal health advocate, I know firsthand how this gap affects our community. Queens is the most populous borough in New York City, and yet we still do not have a single birth center. That is a failure of equity and failure of planning. I'm calling for real investment right here in Queens, starting with the creation of the first birth center birthed by Queens. This would not only meet the healthcare needs of new and growing families right here in Long Island City, but also respond directly to what residents have demanded. Safe, accessible, community-based care. If this plan is truly about the future of LIC, then it must include the future of our children, our most valuable New Yorkers, our tiniest babies, starting from the very beginning. I urge you to revise the One LIC plan and invest in the health of our neighborhood, our families, and our babies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charlene, for your testimony.
Thank you. David Chai, if you're ready, please unmute and begin your testimony.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, I'm David and I'm a current resident of LIC around the Court Square area. And I would just like to testify to voice my support for the One LIC plan. And I think the most important metric I really wanted to throw out there is that our current housing, our current rental vacancy rate is at a historic low of 1.4%. And that is even lower than what we had seen before prior to COVID. And that's a really concerning number because that directly translates to many of the ridiculous rental situation that we're seeing throughout the city. And this is not even concerning, you know, the condos, which have their own set of issues. But when we have, you know, 50 people trying to fight for the same rundown unit that is, that had not been taken care of well, just because of the sore, you know, the sole reason of lack of supply in this case. I find that really concerning. But I also do hear that, you know, on the polar side of the coin, that people are, you know, rightfully have concerns with, you know, whether One LIC can truly bring the affordable vision to, you know, the greater amount of New Yorkers. But based on what I've seen from the plans and what Julie Wong had promised beforehand, I think a lot of those grounds seem to be very well-covered. And again, I fully support the plan. We need to build more from this point, and LIC is a great place for us to start that new chapter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to do another last call. If you have not testified and you wish to do so, please raise your hand and we will go in the order of the raised hand. Okay, I see Rosamund Gian Tussis.
Yes, hello.
Rosemary.
Hi, I don't know how I can make my video come on, but in any event, my name is Rosamund Gian Tussis. I'm an over 55 years resident of C B two, but not that longevity matters because I welcome the prospect of new neighbors. As a member of the C B two, I observed my colleagues listen and deliberate on the One LIC plan. I'm really proud of their efforts and fully support the yes-no vote with such thoughtfully formulated conditions. I would especially resonate to the call for upgrades to public transit and street calming. I would prefer parks, like everybody else, over parking. And I do want to speak on that subject a little further. I would say yes to affordable housing, of course, but no to affordable parking. Let me explain. We should all be grateful for the newly opened pedestrian walkway on the south side of the 59th Street Bridge. However, while this path affords a full view of the Long Island City waterfront, what stands out like a sore thumb is the Con Edison Training Facility with its massive parking lot. I implore the Borough President to negotiate a relocation of this facility so it can be replaced with community benefiting facilities, such as an education and healthcare campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Yes.
Well, not see you, but see you, but hear you.
Okay, so anyone else wishing to testify, please raise your hand now.
Forever hold your peace. But.
Or submit your testimony. Or, yeah, exactly. Okay.
All righty. Well, thank you. And this is for everybody who came out. This is what democracy looks like. It's so important in this day and age for sure. But I want to thank everyone who came out to testify today. And whether you were for or against the plan, you know, we are, we are taking this plan extremely seriously. And I want to thank D C P and all the agencies who've done a lot of work and have heard a lot of feedback from the communities, and I hope they appreciate the passion because it is about leaving this place better than we found it. And I remember my journey probably, oh, 30 years ago, my father worked for a paper manufacturer on Jackson Avenue. So I'm well aware when there was nothing in this area except the Citibank, actually at that time, building and a lot of unscrupulous activity as a kid, I certainly remember. So it's really been amazing to see the transition of Long Island City, which I just, it's fascinating every time I see it. And of course, it is the fastest-growing community in the country. And with that does come complications, right? And the most important thing, I think, as I look at development, is looking at it holistically, not just development. Buildings are nice, but how do we build community? And that's what a lot, that's a lot of what we heard on today. So we look forward to certainly giving our recommendation and focusing in heavily on making sure affordability. Is there especially on our public sites, 100% affordability? Nonprofit developers should certainly be able to be a part of that R F P. Climate justice, open space. The arts was a big thing today and which we believe in. And most importantly, holding, oh, public housing residence, which we want to see investment there. But more importantly, I don't want my public housing residents looking outside their window and seeing these nice buildings coming up. I want them to have an opportunity to live in it, and that's why mapping M I H and other tools is critical here. And I'm going to call on the city to make sure that they're doing it very intentional, unlike in the past, and ensuring that housing connect and job opportunities are really centered in this plan and that there's real direct outreach to make sure that we can move people up if they choose to want to leave public housing as well. And I'll end it just seeing accountability. It's going to be critical here as well. And I know that as the former zoning chair of the council, we put tools in place. We're going to look to make sure that those tools are put in place by the end of this process as well. With that being said, I want to thank everybody who came out to testify once again. I heard D C P and all of my colleagues who came out today have heard the community loud and clear. And we look forward to certainly issuing a responsible recommendation. Our next scheduled hybrid land use public hearing is going to be Thursday, July 17. I don't get the summer off. Okay, I guess no. Thursday, July 17. That's wishful thinking, started at 9:30 a.m. Thursday, July 17, 2025, starting at 9:30 a.m. You can join us here again and we'll put that agenda out, I'm sure, early July. With that being said, have a great summer. Congratulations to all the kids. School seats too, I meant to add that in my closing remarks. But congratulations today is D three's last day of fourth grade. So congratulations to all the parents who had to drop their children to school every morning, such as myself. We made it, we made it, we made it. Now may the lighting bill go up and the air conditioning bill go up because they'll be home more during the summer. With that being said, we're closing out this hearing. Thank you. And thank you to Borough Hall staff. Thank you. Vicki, Lisa, thank you.